Good evening. Welcome to tonight's study session. We have two items on the agenda. The first is a presentation from Dr. Gabriel Byrd regarding the Norman Flag Project, and the second is continued discussion regarding Norman Forward Projects and other municipal facilities' needs. I do want to address that our city manager is unable to join us again tonight. He had some planned family events last week and some unforeseen family emergencies this week, so please keep our city manager and his family in your thoughts and prayers. So with that, I would like to invite Dr. Gabriel Byrd to the podium to give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Thank you, council. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I know you're not here for me, so I'll try to make this short and sweet, but I'm pretty excited about having such a big audience here. So I, hopefully, many of you know by now, I am leading a project to redesign our city's flag. If you don't know about it, please go to normanflag.com. All the information is on there. This was a quick update to council about where we are in the process. For those of you that don't know, we're crowdsourcing our design. It's open to the public. Anybody can submit a design that they would like to. It's all on the website if you go over there. Frequently asked questions, this is not costing the city anything. This is citizen-led. It's all volunteer, day-creative. Designed our website at no charge to us. We have a, the update tonight is our committee members, and everything else is privately funded. So the other key to this is the current flag is going to remain as the city's logo. So street signs will not need to be changed, city vehicles, none of that's going to change. The only thing that's going to change are the physical flags that fly around town. It'll also be copyright-free, so anybody can use it however they want to. It'll be more of a cultural symbol of the city of Norman as opposed to the symbol of the city of Norman's government. With that, I was going to formally let you guys know, we have our committee members. I am the chair. I will not be scoring any of the selection, though, since I know the identity of all of the designers that have submitted. It'll be blind to our committee. Grady Carter is my co-chair. We've got former mayor Bill Nations, who was the mayor when our current flag was designed. Bill Hickman, who was instrumental in getting this project off the ground a few years ago. Bianca Gordon, known for her work with bridges. Margot Loughlin, who's a Norman High history teacher, was my history teacher and is a person I admire very greatly. We have two Norman seniors, from Norman High School, Charlotte Mancino, from Norman North, Lindsay Bellino. We also have conductor of the Norman Philharmonic, Richard Zelinski, designer Michael Pollan, which if you're not familiar with his work, he's a genius, local artist and amazing person Kelly Haney, other local amazing person Ayesha Ali, Amy Pence with the Moore-Lindsey House, which is going to bring some more historical knowledge to our project, and Tim Hartley rounds out our list. So the other update is what our timeframes we've pinned down. We are currently taking flag submissions. We have about thirty so far. A little over two more weeks for people to get their designs in, with an artist statement, too. We want to know what the color selection was and what the geometry means and what is behind the design. The first day of spring, March nineteenth, is the deadline. We should have it up, the finalists up for a public vote by April. So if none of you feel equipped to design a design, I would like you all to turn out and vote, because we want for us to all choose the flag that we're going to be living with. So with that, June ninth, we will present the final, the winner to city council proposing that we adopt it formally on Flag Day, which is June fourteenth. Those are my updates.
What if somebody wants to submit an idea, but they're not the best artists in the world?
That's a fantastic question. I'm glad you ask. I have a graphics design artist who has agreed. If you have a design and a concept, you can hand draw it and send it to us. If it makes it to the finals, they will help to refine that with that artist to a final product. So anybody can submit.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Okay, and we also have two council representatives on the committee as well.
Yes, that is correct. I'm sorry, I left them off. Councilwoman Gierman and Joe Carter have both agreed to be on the, on the committee, so they're going to be able to score. They've also been in advisory capacity as we go along to ensure that we're working very well with the city as we embark on this.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, well, Dr. Byrd, I just want to thank you for taking the initiative. That kind of citizen initiative is what makes our city great. And as a native of Wichita, Kansas, that has recently rediscovered their flag, I've seen what it can do for creating a sense of place and community pride, so I'm very excited about this project, especially the part where it doesn't cost the city any money.
Absolutely, and I am adamant. I did not want this to cost the city either. If we had hit a point where it was going to, I was going to kill this project myself, so.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Byrd.
You guys have a lovely night, and you all have a lovely night.
All right, on to item number two. Continued discussion regarding Norman Forward Projects and other municipal facilities' needs. I'd like to invite Mr. Jason Cotton from ADG back to the podium to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us again here this evening. So obviously, we brought with us a presentation this evening that is kind of a continuation of a conversation that we started last week. And so as we were kind of putting our thoughts together for this evening, you know, it started to feel a little bit like the sequel that everyone kind of wants to see, but is kind of scared to watch. And so, you know, it's not, I would, I guess, kind of reflecting on last week's conversation, you know, it's not lost on us that this is a, you know, we, in essence, kind of ripped the Band-Aid off of some of these Norman Forward projects last week. And so I know that it was a little bit of a painful process, but, you know, I think from our perspective, we're a firm believer that the best way to figure out a way forward is to first kind of get everything on the table. And so that was kind of, I think, the guiding sentiment of last week's presentation and also this evening's presentation. And so we just hope that the information that we're providing is useful for the community and also for council in trying to figure out the best path forward for the community. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. So just real quick, to kind of recap, seems like a natural place to start. The presentation for this evening is just with a quick recap of the information that we covered last week. I know there's probably some people in the audience that weren't here last week for the study session. So obviously, we updated council on the funding analysis that we've been going through with city staff over the last three to four weeks. I guess it's been longer than that, since January. So we, we updated council on that. We talked, spent a little bit talking about the significant juncture that we've reached on several projects, but particularly last week on some Norman Forward projects that we've been working on. And so we kind of described for you what that juncture was, being we need to decide to either reduce the scopes of the projects to match the budgets that we have or figure out a funding mechanism to supplement the budgets that we have for them so that we can kind of execute the original vision for the projects. We talked a little bit about this kind of idea of grouping the projects into buckets, and so last week's conversation was largely about the Norman Forward projects. If you'll remember last week, we also talked about a, another group of projects, and so that's kind of the topic of this evening. But we kind of described how we were organizing, kind of the information that we were presenting. And then we spent some time going back through the Norman Forward kind of history, providing everyone some context so that everyone just had kind of a, just kind of, to remind everyone kind of how we got where we were or where we are today. We went through each one of the Norman Forward projects and kind of did a project-by-project funding analysis. So largely, that analysis, analysis looked at what the current budget was for the project, what the estimate of the project, the estimate of the projects were as of today with the design teams that we have working on them. And so then, obviously, the funding deficit that we have when we compare those two numbers. And so we did that on a project-by-project basis. And then at the end of the presentation, we kind of aggregated all of that information up and kind of showed you a picture of where we believe that we are today on just kind of this Norman Forward bucket of projects. And so we, we finished last, last week's presentation. This slide hopefully looks familiar to you. These are the, I think, seven projects that we talked about last week. And so you can see all of the information I just described, the current funding, the current estimate, the funding deficit for each one of the projects. And then the number at the top, the eighty-five and a half million, is kind of where we ended up and we stopped the conversation last week. And so that's essentially the, the information that we covered last week. So, so for this week, what we're going to talk about is something that we've coined as municipal services projects. And so we'll go through this kind of group of projects. We, we use that phrase primarily because the projects that we're going to be talking about tonight are all kind of mission-critical, I think, to the city of Norman in terms of providing services for its residents. And so it seemed like a natural way to describe this kind of group. As we did last week, we'll spend a little bit of time, provide you some context for each one of these projects, so we kind of have an understanding of how we got where we are today. And so that'll feel real similar to, to last week. We'll also do kind of a by-project funding analysis like we did last week. And so we'll go through each one of these projects. I, I will tell you, this is a smaller group of projects, and so hopefully, that part of it will go a little bit faster. Once we get done going through project-by-project, well, similar to last week, we'll aggregate all of those projects up. And so we'll kind of describe for you what that looks like with this kind of municipal services bucket of projects. And then we'll also compare that to the Norman Forward group of projects that we described last week. And so the, the hope is that it will give you a picture of kind of where we all are in total on all of these projects together. We'll also spend some time discussing options, once we kind of get everything out on the table for everybody. And so we'll walk council through kind of where, what we see as the options moving forward as of today. And then also, we'll spend some time talking about considerations, things that we feel like council and the community should consider in trying to figure out the correct path to move forward. After we kind of get done with that conversation, I'll ask Anthony, Anthony will come up and spend a little bit of time talking to you about possible financial solutions as he sees them. And so we'll spend some time talking about that. And then I think the city clerk is going to spend a little bit of time talking about some specifics on the possible schedule.
And Mr. Cotton, before we dive in, I would like council to hold your questions, write them down, so we can get through the presentation, and then keep our questions just a clarification-type thing. We have a lot of people here who are prepared to make public comment that I think will help us formulate our own questions. And so that's what I would like to do, is to keep our questions, again, just for clarification. Let public, public comment go first, and then we'll finish with the majority of our comments after that. So it's a little bit different than normal. Thank you.
Hopefully, I don't completely lose anybody along the way. It's always odd with no, no comments. But so these are the, this is the group of projects, as I said, municipal services projects. So you can see the three projects that we've looked at here. Municipal complex renovations, the emergency operations center, and the fleet and fire maintenance. So in the process of having this conversation, there was actually a fourth project that come up, that came up that is not listed here. And it's basically a, a day shelter resource center for the homeless here in Norman. And so obviously, a lot of this process that you're seeing here this evening, ADG's been collecting and analyzing information from different project groups. And so as we started to talk about that project, we started to get an understanding of the things that we knew. You know, we spent some time up in Upulm City, visiting with Dan Strong, with the Homeless Alliance, and their, about their day facility, and what kind of programming things are there. We also spent some time talking with staff about the things that they understood about the homeless situation here in Norman. And so as we kind of started having those conversations, a lot of questions started coming up, questions about who might operate the facility, questions about would there be duplication of services with other groups inside the community? You know, questions about what's the programming of the facility look like? And are there other things that we need to look at to provide kind of a holistic solution? And so based on kind of all of those conversations that we had, it was decided that probably the, the next step forward in that project's journey is probably for the city to pull someone on board and help kind of guide the city in terms of a strategic plan for homelessness. It's obviously a very important topic and something the city will need to address, but at this juncture, it didn't really feel like it was far enough along, as far along as these other projects. And so for that reason, it's not included here. And so these are, these are the three projects. And so like we did last time, I'm going to provide you a little bit of context on each one of these projects. So the, doing this last week was a little bit easier. And the reason for that is all of those projects were Norman Forward projects. And so in a way, they all kind of shared a common history. The background on all of them was very similar, and so we could kind of tell them as one story. The trick with these three projects this evening is they're, they, they have backgrounds that are not necessarily related to one another. And so we're going to have to do this kind of project-by-project a little bit. And so I'll try to go through this relatively quick. So the first one I'm going to talk about this evening is the municipal complex renovations. So based on research that ADG's done with staff, you know, that this journey kind of started in January of '08. Two thousand and eight municipal complex master plan, prepared by McKinney Partnership here in Norman, under contract with the city. And so really, what guided that master plan is this idea that Pioneer Library, the Norman Public Library, would be no longer in Building D to the west of us here. And so that was kind of the idea for how might we take that opportunity and rearrange the services as they are kind of organized here on the campus here at the city of Norman. And so that was kind of the two thousand and eight master plan. That master plan largely informed, informed the November two thousand and eight bond election. And so the master plan identified about eleven point two million dollars in improvements. And so that appeared as proposition number three in November of '08 and was obviously approved by the voters. September of 2015, and so if you'll think back, this is about a month before the Norman Forward vote. Based on the information I've collected, that, you know, that we feel like there's a conversation going on in the community at this point about is the senior center in the library, is it not? And so McKinney Partnership provided an update to that original '08 master plan that kind of contemplated, okay, well, if the senior center is not located in the library, then what does, what does this plan look like? And so McKinney, again, provided an updated kind of space utilization analysis and an idea for how that might move forward, an option on what it looked like if the senior center was not located in Building D. And so that, that was a significant milestone kind of in this history. So September twenty fif, September 2019, we got another revised master plan for the municipal complex. So I know there's a big chunk of time here that's, that's happened between 2015, September of 2015 and September of 2019. So as we'll talk a little bit later this evening, there, there were some improvements that were done in that four years, primarily roof improvements and HVAC improvements at Building D. But the other thing that's happening in that time, which I have something on the milestone that speaks to this, is essentially the library was operating in Building D. And so there wasn't really a lot of movement that, to be had, because Pioneer Library was using that facility. So it wasn't until November of 2019, obviously, the central branch opens, Building D becomes unoccupied as the library moves up to the central branch. And so again, all of these things have kind of, you know, we arrived at this January 2020 staff meeting, which you guys probably remember me discussing last week. And so the cost estimate from January of '08 to September of 15 to September of 19 has increased along the way. And so this project, the municipal complex renovations, kind of became part of the conversation in that January 2020 staff meeting. So that's kind of the history for this project as we understand it. So the next project I'll talk a little bit about, the Emergency Operations Center. So the, the history on this project, it probably goes beyond, back before April 2014, but I'm going to start there just as a matter of convention. So the public safety sales tax is obviously passed by the voters. That sales tax identified six and a half million dollars for the Emergency Operations Center, and so that's kind of where the funding comes from. December of 16, the city of Norman selects an A and E firm to design the EOC. And so obviously, there's a little bit of a chunk of time between when the sales tax passed and when the A and E was selected. So our conversations with staff have indicated that, in large part, that section of time was primarily used to implement emergency radio systems that were also funded as a part of that sales tax. And so staff was primarily occupied with that, kind of in that little gap there. So December of 2017, we receive, the city receives kind of the first preliminary estimates for the Emergency Operations Center from the A and E. And the, the initial budgets were, or the initial estimates were somewhat larger than the six and a half million dollars that was identified in the, in the sales tax. I'm having a problem with the button tonight, but October of 19, so from December 2017 to October 19, city staff, the A and E firm, they're going through really an extensive value engineering process in trying to get this project back into budget. So that's kind of what's going on. That seems to conclude around October of 2019. And so at that time, it appears that the, the project's in budget. As many of you probably remember or know, the Oversight Committee for that project obviously has some concerns about what the project has been reduced to in that period. And so we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. But obviously, January 2020, again, this project is over budget and it becomes a part of the conversation that we, we had with staff in terms of funding deficits. So lastly, the fleet and fire maintenance. So again, similar to EOC, it, its journey kind of starts in April 2014. There was an eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars identified in that sales tax to fund the fire apparatus and, fire apparatus and maintenance facility. And so July 2019, I think everybody is familiar with this story, the non-campus cart routes basically transitioned to the city of Norman. So the city of Norman inherits a public transit system that it didn't previously operate. So obviously, that's more than just the buses themselves. In order to operate a public transit system, you need something to maintain the buses that you're operating. And so that did not unfortunately come with the package. There was a, there was a conversation going on in July regarding a federal, a federal grant that OU was in line to receive. And that, that grant, my understanding, was about three million dollars and was anticipated to fund construction of a maintenance facility. And so there was a conversation going on in July of that year, of last year, about that grant possibly being transferred to the city of Norman. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Mr. Cotton, I want to clarify that. It wasn't a grant. It was money that OU had to pay back to the federal government. And this was such a novel situation that there was no mechanism to return it back to us. So it's not like we missed out on a grant opportunity. So I just wanted to clarify that. That that is money that should have come right back to the new operator of that system, but since nothing like that had ever been done before, there was no mechanism to execute that.
Okay, thank you. So in September of 19, the city retains an A and E to help them with the fleet maintenance facility, the fire maintenance facility, and the park maintenance facility. And so November of 19, the public transit sales tax passes. Just to remind everyone, that sales tax funds operations of the, of the transit system and obviously recurring maintenance needs, but not a maintenance facility. So I just want to bring that up for everyone. And then in January of 2020, preliminary estimates are received from the A and E. That same month, as the mayor said, the city of Norman realized that it was not going to get that money back. And so that's obviously was a detriment to the project. So in addition to the estimate being a little bit higher than, or having a project that really hasn't had no funding mechanism to begin with, obviously, this project also became part of the conversation that we had in January. So that's kind of a little bit of background, again, on all three of the projects. So the first project I'm going to talk about in terms of the funding analysis that we did is the municipal complex renovations. And I, I mean, we're sitting here in 2020, so I'm, I'm trying to hit the high points of twelve years' worth of history. And hopefully, Rick is here and he can hop up and tell me if I say something wrong, but I'm going to try to capture this in a nutshell quickly. So, so one of the big funding, one of the big guiding opportunities of this municipal complex renovations was the relocation of Pioneer Library System out of Building D. And so that created a lot of opportunities in terms of space on the municipal complex. There was also, I think, in addition to that, a couple of guiding principles, this idea of a unified development center or a neighborhood center, a way that the city could basically better organize departments within the complex to make it easier for people to interact that needed services from the city. And so that was kind of a, a goal of the master plan. There was also a conversation going on about the, the need for the city's municipal court to have the ability to be a court of record, and so there's some space needs related to that. And so as many of you are probably already aware, municipal court is currently kind of in the northwest corner of the police station and doesn't have sufficient space. And so these were kind of some of the guiding things that guided the, that guided the master plan in '08. And so to make, to hit these goals, there were a few things that needed to happen. And so Building A, the departments that are in Building A would essentially move to Building D. Utilities, the utility department, which is currently kind of in the south end of Building C, would move, would also move into Building D. The senior center at that time, remember this is '08, the idea was that the senior center would be inside of Building D, and so that would move into Building D. And then the municipal court, the portion of, of Building B, the northwest corner of the police station, would then move into Building A, which is now vacated. And then that space would be renovated. And so that's essentially kind of where the '08 master plan kind of stopped. And so in '08, the estimate for all of these improvements came in at about eleven point two million dollars. And so as I said before, that's largely what informed the bond issue in November of that year.
Is that pretty close, Rick?
So in 2015, so a lot of things had happened, obviously, between 2008, 2015. Seven years have gone by. There were basically two and a half, about two point eight million dollars worth of work completed in that time, some roof replacement at Building D and also some HVAC replacement. And so that had occurred kind of in that gap. Remember that Pioneer Library System is still in the building at this time, 2015. And so again, we're right in front of the Norman Forward vote. There's a conversation, I think, occurring publicly about the senior center not being located in that building. And so kind of in, in contemplation of that, there's an option in this 2015 version of the master plan that it's, it's presented as an option plan. The senior center is at, as an, at another location. And so that provides some expanded growth opportunities inside Building D. And so that's addressed in the master plan. There was also about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly in additional renovation, so some additional remodel in the south end of Building C, also some renovations in Building 201, the building that were in here this evening. And so those were added into this new version of the master plan. The building A and B, the municipal court relocation was largely left untouched. By the 2015 update, it appeared as it did in 2008. And so at the end of the 2015 effort, the master plan, there, there were other things considered in the master plan, parking improvements and other things. But in large part, the 2015 estimate, which is kind of capturing the spaces that you see here in this diagram, roughly fourteen point four million dollars. So obviously, the cost increased a little bit, as we would expect from 2008 to 2015. So in 2019, the city made an effort to kind of call a timeout. Again, this is right after the library, the library was about to move, I believe, you know, September of that year. So the library was about to move. And so they took kind of, they said, okay, timeout, can we look at this kind of more holistically, more comprehensively? Is there a better way for us to organize kind of how we work in all these buildings? And so McKinney Partnership helped the city arrive at a plan. And so you can, you can see here, we've taken a little bit more holistic look at the campus. Renovations at Building D, at Building B, I'm sorry, were significantly improved to include the entire building. Also, the renovations at Building C were increased to capture the whole footprint. And so you see here, we're really touching pretty much every building on the campus. And you can see the costs there associated with each one of those. And so twenty, September of twenty nineteen, the estimate for all of this work comes in at about twenty-two and a half million dollars. And so here, if you'll, you'll probably remember these slides from last time, just a really quick snapshot, eleven point two million dollars. The original bond authorization, twenty-two and a half million is about where we feel like we we're at today, which leaves a funding deficit of about eleven point three million dollars to complete the entire master plan. And so on to the Emergency Operations Center. So again, April fourteen, the public safety sales tax passes, the six and a half million dollar authorization that we've already talked about this evening. December twenty sixteen, A and E is selected. So one of the first things that A and E did after being selected was to do what's called a needs assessment. And so they sat down with city staff and the police department, people that would be using this facility, and tried to get a feel for what they needed. And so that, through that process, they arrived at about a twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand square foot program. And so based on that and some anticipated unit cost, cost per square foot numbers from the A and E, we had arrived at a program or a facility that was about seventeen point nine million dollars. And so obviously, significantly exceeded the the six and a half million dollars as was originally kind of, the project was originally contemplated under. And so between January and seventeen, January of seventeen, December of seventeen, city staff, the architect and architect and engineer for the project, also the user group, the police department. Obviously, they're, you know, in that year, they're looking at this twenty-seven thousand foot program, trying to figure out a way to narrow it down. And so in December of that year, they basically arise, arrive at about a twenty-two thousand square foot program, which is kind of what you see here on the left side of the slide. And so again, doing some simple math, cost per square foot numbers or estimates from the A and E. December of seventeen, the project is reduced down to about fourteen and a half million dollars. So we're still significantly north of the six and a half that was included in the bond authorization. So so over the next December seventeen to October nineteen, almost couple of years, city staff and A and E have gone through this really extensive value engineering process, trying to get this project back under the six and a half million dollar budget. And so in May of that year, May of last year, they basically arrive at a program that looks, looks kind of like what you see here. And so obviously, not as robust as what it was in December of seventeen. But again, continuing to whittle down on the program, on the things that would be at the facility in May of this year, or May of last year, they arrive at a program that of about seven and a half million dollars, so still not quite there, but obviously getting very close. And so from May until towards the end of of last year, they continue to cut reductions in program. You can see a pretty significant reduction in the dispatch area that was proposed with the facility. And there was also some circulation within the building that was reduced. And and also, oh, and one thing I forgot to mention. So the Transportation Management Center is something that is, the engineering analysis is funded for through the twenty nineteen bond. And so that program is really inside of this facility. And so and in the process of going through the value engineering, that part of the program has been left untouched. And I think the reason that's important, that that engineering analysis that's been funded, it's the key to a federal grant application that will fund all the equipment and F F and E that goes inside of that part of the facility. And so as a part of this value engineering process, that part of the program has been left alone. So I just wanted, I guess, point that out for the group. So but again, since May of nineteen, the the team has continued to whittle down and whittle down and whittle down. You see a list here of some of the changes that have most recently been made. I would just, I guess, reiterate for you that this V E process has essentially been going on since January of seventeen. And so as you can imagine, this is not an exhaustive list. There were other significant changes that were made. But in October of last year, the cost estimate comes in, five point seven five million dollars, and so we've we've hit the mark. That being said, in November of twenty nineteen, the Citizens Oversight Committee writes a letter to council and basically explains that they have some concerns about where they've arrived at. And I think, you know, in in speaking with staff, speaking with the chief of police, you know, obviously, they, there's some concern that the program, as we've arrived at it, is not, is not quite what the city needs and may not need our our needs long term. And so in talking with everyone about the project, it seems apparent that the December seventeen program is is the closest to what the the user group and the city staff and A and E feel like is necessary for this facility. And so again, a fourteen and a half million dollar type project. So with the six and a half million dollars in funding that we currently have, we we obviously have a funding deficit of about eight million dollars. So last project, fire and fleet maintenance. So again, April fourteen is kind of the beginning of this project. Eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars were identified for the fire maintenance facility. Obviously, in July of nineteen, as I said before, the non-campus cart routes transitioned to Norman. And we've already talked about the funding that the city did not receive. So in July, we were hopeful that that was going to happen, but obviously, it never came through. So September of nineteen, again, A and E selected for the design of the fleet maintenance, the fire maintenance, and the park maintenance. And so that was an important milestone. The public tra, the public transit sales tax passes by the voters. And then again, January of twenty, we receive a preliminary design as well as confirmation that the city was not going to be in receipt of those additional funds. And so so the the whole idea in this project all along was to locate all of these facilities in the north base area. So you guys probably, council probably remembers us talking about this last time. The idea being that the facilities would be co-located. There's an existing city maintenance facility, maintenance facility just on the north side of Da Vinci Street here. And so the two projects that we're talking about tonight are obviously identified here on this site plan. You will probably recognize this site plan last, last week when we met, we talked about the park maintenance facility. And so that's the the building that's here in the middle of this site plan. And so the funding kind of snapshot, as we're discussing it tonight, does not include that project. We've already talked about that project. We did it last week. And so here you see the program for the fire maintenance facility, the original vision. So it's about a seventy-three hundred square foot program, a couple of parking bays, restrooms, office, wash bay. As I said, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars available in funding. And then again, just for your information, this is the the current program for the fleet maintenance facility. So it's about a seventeen, seventeen and a half thousand square foot program, eight service bays. It's got admin space, restrooms, break rooms, and then obviously, on the south end, some space for parts and tools and tires and all the things that you need to maintain a public transit system. So that's kind of the program. And so here you see kind of a snapshot. This one in particular, I think, looks particularly painful, given that we only have about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars to get, make all this happen. And so I've kind of ghosted in here, the 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 funding that we've already talked about this evening, that was the hopes. I mean, obviously, that was not going to solve our issue, but it got us a lot closer. And so I just want to have some acknowledgement of that, I guess. And so all all in, this is kind of, this is an aggregate analysis of the three projects that we talked about tonight, Transit and Fire, Municipal Complex, and the Emergency Operations Center. So all in, all three projects, about twenty-seven point two million dollars is where we feel we're at in terms of a funding deficit. And so putting that together with the conversation that we had last week, eighty-five and a half million dollars gets us to a total funding deficit for all the projects of about a hundred and thirteen million dollars. And so that's kind of where we've arrived in terms of a funding analysis. So I think, you know, now that kind of everything's out on the table, it seems like a logical place to kind of talk a little bit about options as we see them today. And so usually, when we, when we talk about options, you know, we talk about, you know, there's always an option to do nothing. And I I think in this case, the way that we would better phrase this is that we develop an option that requires as little additional funding as possible. And so we're kind of at one end of the spectrum. So obviously, part of that solution would be to reduce the Norman Forward scopes to match the budgets that we have today. And so last week, we spent some time walking through what that looked like for each one of these facilities. Obviously, not quite the vision that I I think anybody had in mind when this journey kind of started. The, I think, within this same kind of option or conversation, the municipal complex renovations, as I said, we have about eleven point two million dollars currently authorized for the project. And so we have a much, right now, we have a much larger project than that can support. And so the idea, I think, under this option would be that any of those improvements that are not included in that original bond would be pushed out to a later date under some other funding mechanism when we get there. And so that would be kind of how we see the municipal complex, I think, in particular, under this option. Under this option, I think, on the E O C, we would likely construct it as currently documented. As I mentioned before, there's some concern from the Citizen Oversight Board as to whether or not that facility will meet the needs of the city long term, if it's the right size. But obviously, we, through a really long V E process, we have arrived at a budget that we think works with the current funding. And so the idea would be to move forward with that program. I think it's about a, somewhere between eleven and thirteen thousand square foot program. So it's a little bit less than half of where they started. I do feel like, and we've we've talked about this internally, fleet and park maintenance is something that has got to be addressed. So regardless of what you do on any of these other projects, the city does not have a solution for these two projects. And I mean, obviously, the city has inherited a public transit system. As I said before, you don't have a facility to maintain your public transit system. And so regardless of what you do on these other projects, we have to figure out a solution. The city cannot obviously maintain the bus system. It cannot keep service moving for residents without having a place to maintain those buses. And so I I feel like that's got to be addressed somehow. A D G and city staff both do. The fleet maintenance, or the park maintenance is also important because as of today, unless that park maintenance is funded and it's moved, there's no way that the Reeve Park project can move forward. And so that's also important. And so there's funding that needs to be addressed there no matter what. There are implications, I think, to this this option. And so I think as it relates to Norman Forward, it really kind of all starts with softball football. So as you might recall from our conversation last week, we talked about softball football and what it, the program for that facility might look like. So the important thing to understand is that there's this domino effect between all of these park projects. And so if, in fact, softball football does not get properly funded and we do not construct it, that pro, that project is important because it allows adult softball from Reeves to move out of Reeves and into the new facility. And so that that is important because without adult, adult softball moving out, there's no way to expand the youth baseball program at Reeves. And so if there's no place to expand youth baseball at Reeves, there's also no, no place to expand the soccer facilities at Griffin. And so for these three projects in particular, there's kind of this domino effect if we don't figure out a way to fund the softball football facility. And so I think it's important that council understands that, that that's one of the implications of going down this this path. There are also, we talked a little bit last time about potential or estimated economic impact of these projects. And so obviously, the implication of going this route, you know, I can remember from our conversation last week, and I I hope you do too, that a lot of that assumptions that we made in terms of economic impact was assuming facilities of a certain caliber, of a certain size, that they could attract people from out of town and attract visitors. And and obviously, that's a key component of the estimated economic impact. And so under this scenario, I I would also remind you that that, the, these economic impact numbers that we discussed last week are annual numbers. And so this is annual economic impact. So we feel like under this scenario, obviously, you're not going to be able to build the facilities to support this type of impact and attract visitors. So in reality, the that economic impact largely gets taken off the table, I think, under this option. There's also other implications, particularly as it relates to the municipal services projects. And so again, we don't have a maintenance facility to maintain bus, buses. It becomes difficult for us to maintain bus service for residents, and so that's obviously an implication. It becomes more challenging for the the city staff to maintain the parks that you currently have without a park maintenance facility. And then obviously, the Emergency Operations Center, we all hope and pray that nothing terrible happens. But obviously, that facility in particular is mission critical in terms of supporting our first responders should an emergency come up in the future. And so there will obviously be implications if if that facility is not properly sized and programmed. So kind of at the other end of the spectrum in our mind is option two. And so option two is essentially kind of securing additional funding. So the idea would be to secure additional funding, kind of as we've described, execute the, all of the Norman Ford projects according to the original vision that we discussed at length last, last week. And so I I think with this, again, we would also secure additional funding for all of the municipal service projects that we talked about tonight. And so this is obviously at the other end of the spectrum in terms of, in terms of what an option, which options might be. And so I'm going to spend a few minutes just talking about considerations. So obviously, we've talked about this a little bit already this evening, but, you know, a lot of the projects that we talked about, particularly the ones this evening, are really critical to to the services that the city provides residents. And so doing them or not doing them, or not doing them well, or not doing them where they fit your community, obviously has implications. And so I think it's important that we remember that all of these services are really important for our, for our community. I would offer that time is of the essence, I think, as we kind of have this public conversation about the best way to move forward. We have a lot of projects, I mean, we're five years into Norman Ford, and we have a, a lot of projects that are in design right now. You can see a list here. Some of these are from the group of projects that we talked about last week. Some of them are from the the conversation that we brought with us this this evening. We also have projects that are currently bidding, Reeve Park and Emergency Operations Center, they're currently being bid. And then also projects currently in construction. And so as you can see, we have a lot of things up in the air right now. And so what that means is contractors that are waiting to try to figure out how we're moving forward, staff that are trying to figure out how to advise contractors to either stop or move forward, design teams that are trying to figure out how to finish construction documents. And so I would just surmise it to say, we've got a lot of balls in the air right now. And so I think, as I, as I'm saying on this slide, your time is really of the essence, so I would just mention that for consideration. One thing that council may not be aware of, A D G has actually been involved in the MAPS program in Oklahoma City for almost three decades now. And so obviously, being involved in that as long as we have, we've had a lot of lessons learned. I I think one of the big takeaways for me personally is that, you know, anybody that touches that program or the projects with that program are really taught this lesson of it's not about you. It's not about, it's not about you. It's about the MAPS program, and it's about what that program means to the citizens of Oklahoma City. And so obviously, I think, so everything that we do with the MAPS program is kind of looked at through that lens, and it's kind of a guiding philosophy, if you will. And so obviously, we've had a lot of success through the years, but it's not been without challenges, I would say. I was not on the, on this account whenever this happened, but many of you might remember nineteen ninety-eight, the city of Oklahoma City has to go back out to the voters to finish the first MAPS program. And so at that time, they were sitting down and again, found themselves in a very similar situation to to everyone here in that they realized that we don't have enough money to finish this project. That was promised to the voters. And so it, and going back and looking at everything, it very much feels like they were trying to solve the the issue that they had right there in front of them. But I think it's interesting to note, in looking back, how important that decision was in setting a tone for the rest of the MAPS program. Like, there's been so many great things that have happened in Oklahoma City. And if that group had not had the courage to go back out to the voters and have a conversation about how to finish that first set of projects right, there's so many things that would have never happened, and the MAPS brand would not mean to the city of Oklahoma City what it means today. And so I would offer that up as a lesson learned. I would also challenge you to kind of think about the Norman Forward program as a legacy that we're going to ultimately pass on to the generations that come, the future generations that come behind us. And so, you know, I think it's, I think it's really important that everything we do, we do within that context. It's so important to finish these projects right, especially this first group of projects. It's, it's, it will set such a tone for anything that Norman Forward does in the future and what it means. I I really, I truly feel like, you know, if the council kind of thinks of Norman Ford as a legacy and kind of takes a long-term approach and thinks about the long-term implications of how we move forward, I think it could be really transformative for this program and what it means to the residents. And so I would just implore you to kind of think about your program within those terms. So that kind of wraps me up. I'm going to turn this over to Anthony now. He's going to talk to you a little bit about finance, and I'm going to get out of the way.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director. I was, I was sitting here. I was, I was sitting here watching and listening to Jason's presentation. And man, it was like a, a rehash of my life over the last, like, twelve years. I've, I've lived all of these things. And, and, and I want everybody to understand that, I think I can speak for my colleagues on the staff when I say that we take great pride and we take this personally. And, and I have lived through all of these things. I, I, they all boil down to money for me, though. I'm, I'm the finance guy. And so as I was living through those Public Safety Oversight Committee meetings and, and hearing the things that were going to get cut out of that project, it's money to me. And, and, okay, how are we going to get that back into the budget? Well, maybe we should be thinking about more money to do it right. That's, I was thinking that at the time. Because some of the things were being talked about being, being cut out of that project are pretty critical as I was hearing them. I was hearing that, you know, originally, that EOC building is supposed to be able to withstand an F-4 tornado. Because, you know, in times of disaster, that Emergency Operations Center is the nerve center of the whole city. So that got cut out, you know, that hardening of the facility, that sort of thing. Many of you know I ride the bus. This is personal to me. And that picture that you saw of the bus broken down on I-35, well, I was waiting at the bus stop, and we didn't know why the bus didn't come. We were just sitting there for thirty, forty-five an hour and, and wondering what was going on. I later found out that, yeah, the bus broke down on I-35. We live these things, they're important. So as I am hearing these numbers coming in from the engineers about how much it will cost to build these things in the scope that we had originally envisioned, I'm shocked. I mean, you know, like, we're talking about a hundred million dollars more than what we had originally talked about. Well, to me, I'm the finance guy. And my job is to, if council directs that we're going to do these things at the scope that we want to do them, how can we pay for them? We were originally cutting back everything, changing the scope of the projects. Can we find money in the capital fund to shift around? Can we try to get some grants? Can we do this? Can we do that? Can we shift things around? But at some point, it became very clear and very apparent to myself and to everybody else that this was not just a shifting of the dominos, that, that, that we could get these things done, that we would need to have more money from some source, and that we would probably have to go back out to the people to ask for the funding to do it right. So from the finance perspective, there are two major ways for a municipality, the city of Norman, to get the kind of money that we're talking about here with the permission of the voters. The first major way is to go for a general obligation bond. And there are some very good points of financing capital projects with general obligation bonds. And we've talked about these with the council over the years. Unlike a sales tax, which a lot of times we hear a sales tax being regressive in that the sales tax is paid at a larger proportion by the poorest people, the people that can least afford it, because they are spending more of their money on those necessities that the sales tax applies to. So the sales tax by definition is regressive. General obligation bonds are backed by a property tax that is progressive. Property tax by definition is an ad valorem tax. Ad valorem is the Latin word for per value. So the higher the value of your property, the more you pay. It's progressive as opposed to regressive. We've talked to council over the years about these mega trends that are happening in our sales tax base and how that is impacting not just on Norman Forward's sales tax, but also on the city's general fund sales tax and our capital sales tax and our public safety sales tax. We are very dependent on sales tax. And, and as council knows, and as the public may not know, Oklahoma is the only state in the country that cities cannot use property tax for operations. So we are extremely dependent on sales tax. And to the extent that we can, we want to diversify our revenue base and pay for more things with sources of revenue other than the sales tax. So that's another thing that bodes for paying for these capital projects with general obligation bonds. If council directs that we move forward with the general obligation bond proposal, then it will be my job to dig in with our financial advisory team that's here, our bond council teams that are here, city attorney's office, and actually structure the ballot to make us ensure that we're crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is to make sure that the ballot structure will pass the muster of the State Attorney General's Office and all of those things. And as Jason kind of alluded to, we've had some preliminary discussions about this. And, and we believe, Councilmember Beerman gave a kind of analogy about, you know, cake versus broccoli and, and what you can lump together and what you cannot. And in the preliminary opinion of our bond council, the Norman Forward projects we've talked about can be lumped together in one ballot proposition. The municipal service projects would probably have to be on a second ballot proposition. Now, when I say different ballot propositions, that, you know, it's the same day. You're voting on these things the same day. It's just that Proposition 1 is for this, Proposition 2 is for that. And we have to structure these things such that we can save as much money as we can when we go out and actually issue and structure the, the indebtedness. So again, ad valorem taxes, general obligation bonds are progressive. This is just a preliminary look based on some work that we've done with our financial advisors of what doing the whole hundred and twenty million dollars that we've talked about would impact on various levels of, of homesteads. And, and these are just preliminary figures, you know, there's a lot of assumptions behind this. When we actually issue the debt, the market conditions are not going to be what they are now. They might be a little bit higher, they might be a little bit lower. We're assuming a homestead exemption, we're assuming a twenty-year bond. You know, there's a lot of assumptions behind this, so this will not be exactly right. But this will be in the ballpark. So on a hundred thousand dollar home, and this is, this is your value of your home, this is not your assessed value, it would be about six dollars and sixty-one cents a month. If your home, the average, the median home value in Norman is about a hundred and forty thousand. So a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it's about ten dollars a month compared to your overall tax bill, your overall mortgage. A two hundred thousand dollar home is thirteen eighty-one, and a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is about seventeen dollars a month. The alternative for coming up with this sort of money is a sales tax. There's been discussions of, you know, kind of doing what Oklahoma City did, extending the, the term, the, the length of the, the Norman Forward sales tax beyond its fifteen-year authorized period. And, and yes, those are some things that could be done to pay for this. We could, the public safety sales tax is kind of locked in because it's a permanent tax. But we could increase the rate of the public safety sales tax. We could increase the rate of the capital sales tax and pay for these sorts of things. But again, I would always direct council to, let's try to move away from sales tax to the extent that we can because of those mega trends, because of the fact that we are so dependent on sales tax already. Those mega trends that we've talked about. We have experienced this sea change in consumer behavior. We talked about this last week. And we talked about all of those things at the Capitol Budget Retreat when we first discussed these overruns in these projects at the Council Budget Retreat on February the eighteenth. But for a lot of reasons, in my opinion, the chief among them being this change in consumer behavior, folks aren't buying things in stores anymore to the extent that they used to. When folks buy things in the store, we are easily collecting the property tax, I mean, the sales tax from them. But when they buy things online or in catalogs, it's much more difficult to enforce the same requirement that they have to pay the sales tax, but it's much more difficult to enforce. Because of those mega trends, our sales taxes in all of these areas, the general fund, the public safety sales tax, Norman Forward sales tax, the capital sales tax, are falling below projections. And I am sitting in those Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board meetings and, and, and council is hearing from your CFOB warnings about the shortfall in the Norman Forward sales tax. And I have this cloud overhanging my head as I am hearing these engineering estimates coming in from Norman Forward above what we had originally projected. And I have this cloud over my head about the other side of the coin, that, that we are not bringing in as much money as we thought to pay for them at their budgets. Okay? So on both sides of that coin, we have a problem with sales tax. How do we address that? I won't dwell on these factors, but I would reiterate them. Sales tax is regressive, property tax is progressive. We are overly dependent on sales tax, and there's no way around that. If we continue and just extend the Norman Forward sales tax, we project that we would have to extend it for about eleven years to pay for these projects. There's a basic difference, though, between Norman Forward and MAPS, as Jason was talking about. The MAPS projects were from their origin, always envisioned to be, and they have been, pay-as-you-go projects. You collect the tax money, you pay for a project when, when the money comes in to pay for them. And, and Oklahoma City was facing this problem where, you know, they weren't collecting the taxes that they needed. And so we're not going to be able to do one of these projects. And the project that was last in the original MAPS proposal was what is now Chesapeake Arena. And if they had not been going back to the voters, me being this huge NBA fan would not, you know, Councilman McCarter, the Thunder wouldn't be here if they hadn't gone back to the voters. Well, we, in Norman Forward, never played by that rule. Way early in the Norman Forward consideration process, it was decided that we didn't want to necessarily wait for the money to come in before we built the projects. There was always an assumption that we would debt finance the large brick and mortar projects. So as of today, we have collected about thirty-nine million dollars in Norman Forward's sales tax, but we have built sixty-nine million dollars worth of projects. That glittering new library, all of those things, those are debt financed. And we want to continue with that proposal of moving the projects forward. Well, i- if we just do an extension of the sales tax at its current rate, we would either have to wait eleven years for the money to come in, because remember, we have already debt financed the projects that are ongoing right now. So in order to do an additional debt backed by that sales tax, we would have to do some sort of a, and, and my financial advisor, you know, his, his hair is turning gray as I'm talking about this. Because this would be a very weird structure. But it'll be some sort of a debt structure where we're putting off the repayment of the principal for eleven years and doing a balloon payment eleven years from now. And there would be a huge amount of interest that would pile up in that eleven-year period. It's really not a prudent way to finance things, okay? As opposed to a general obligation bond issue, it's a new revenue source, we can start right away. I'll turn it over to Brenda at this point to talk about if we go back to the voters for something, the schedule that we might do it under.
Okay, council's first opportunity to get something before the voters would be the June election. And that would kind of keep in line with this sense of urgency that we're feeling to keep the projects on schedule as well. So the election in June would be a June thirtieth election, which means we would have to have the first reading ordinance calling the election on the March twenty-fourth council agenda. The second reading would be on the April fourteenth council agenda. And then our notice to the election board would be April the fifteenth to meet the June thirtieth election. Any questions about any of that?
All right, so that was the main presentation. Do we have any questions for clarification? As you can see, we've already lost some families because we do have a lot of children in the audience, hence the desire to do public comment first. Is there anything that's absolutely burning that you have to have clarified that people in the audience might need clarified as well? Councilmember Petron.
Before I ask my questions, was it, were you going to give, did you want to let the public go first? Is that what I remembered, you were to go and flop around? Okay, that's fine, I can wait.
Okay, just want to make sure everything was clear. All right, to be respectful of your time, and again, thank you all for coming out and engaging in the most important level of government. We will open it up to public comment, but before we do, can I see a show of hands of who all would like to speak tonight? Okay, I'm... To make sure everyone gets heard, let's try and, and shoot for a five-minute timeline instead of the three. I think that'll be helpful with that. Does everyone think that would be all right, since there is such a large crowd? Okay, all right, who wants to start?
I have to leave to get a kid in five minutes. I'll, I'll be quick, I'll be really quick. I'm Lisa Williams, I'm in Ward Six. I have kids that swim, I have kids that play soccer. Norman Forward is really important. Part of the reason we moved to Norman is because we were promised an aquatic center. That's why we didn't move to Edmund. Seriously, our Realtor told us that it was going to be built in two thousand eighteen. We moved here in two thousand sixteen. So my suggestion to the council is keep the Norman Forward tax and do a bond proposal, and let's get this stuff paid for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm glad that wasn't long, because I'm a senior and I can't be on that floor very long. So thank you to the mayor and the council members for being here this evening, and I'll be quick. I'm actually representing the Senior Ad Hoc Committee. I'm chair of that committee. And I'm just wanted to let you all know what we have concluded a week ago and kind of what we've sent forward to you for consideration. It was a unanimous vote of the committee to move from Reeves Park, which had been the initial proposal, to the Porter Complex that'll be a part of Inspire Norman, we hope, when the whole center goes in there. We, we made that move in part because the, or made that vote in part because the, the wish of the seniors for certain and for seniors in the future, I heard that, would be for us to go ahead with the whole project, complete project we would all be proud of. That was very important and emphasized in the committee meetings. And to do that, of course, means more funding. We're short around, I don't know, six, seven million, I think is right. And so we were told that night by representative from Norman Regional, not officially, like to be in writing, but that they would be willing, if we moved to the Porter location, to fund the, the, the additional amount of money so it could get on the ground quickly, that there'd be space there to, to start that build out. We would be the central part of the build out before they went forward with the whole project. And again, that, that was not in writing, but a representative from Norman Regional made that proposal. The other option would be to be a part of the bonds that you all are talking about to fund the, the rest. But I guess the major emphasis tonight, and there may be other committee members that want to talk, would be that we want to move forward quickly. We would like to have it be on the ground soon. We have design plans going. It's, they're popular, we know that, we've looked at Oklahoma City's programs. We don't want to lose any more seniors before we get this on the ground, but we want it to be a futuristic, right? Right, Bill? We want it to be a futuristic concept for, for, as we move forward for seniors, because seniors means fifty and up for those of you that are going, oh, well, I'm not there. You will be very quickly, right? Right? So yes, thank you for your consideration, it's in your hands. And if we can be of help, we sure appreciate your thought and thoughts about it. The only other issue I, only other thing, issue I would bring up, and I only bring it up because I am a psychologist in this community, is there was a mention of, do we want the senior center to be a part of what will be emphasized as a behavioral health... of what will be emphasized as a behavioral health clinic at the Inspire Norman project? And I think the answer can, I certainly know this from research. I've worked in emergency settings. We would actually be safer there, and behavioral health patients are all of us. So we would, it would definitely be a great location, particularly with a cancer center and other health, a health village would be a perfect location for us. So that's the consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eddie Sims, Chair of the PSST Oversight Committee, Ward Seven. The EOC has been an issue with us since before 2014. We identified the needs from some events that had happened prior to that. The initial idea was to have an EOC and a special needs shelter. As it got closer to designing it, it was obvious that the EOC was by far the most important part of that. There's some other options for the shelter. One of the things that we really wanted was for it to be functional now and in the future. And I have been here a long time. And Norman's always trying to do things as inexpensive as possible, but five years after they do them, we realize we didn't do it right. It's never going to be cheaper to do it right than it is now. One of the first things, well, the 22,000 square foot option is one we can support. That still gives us all the essentials we need. But one of the things they got cut shortly after that was to harden the whole facility. That facility is east northeast of here. So it's not impossible that what we've got today could get taken out, and that could get taken out, and then we've got a really big problem. Not having something that will have the offices and the dispatch capability for the future is just not reasonable. Do it now, do it right. This is something that Anthony's been at numerous meetings we've had. Was trying to figure out, what are the options we have? We've got to do this right. So I just implore you to please take the 22,000 square foot option that has the needs that we have and move forward with it. Are there any questions that I could answer? Thank you very much.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Good evening, I'm April Hyple, and I am the Director of Food and Shelter here in Norman. I'm also a Ward Four voter. I was a Ward One voter for a very long time. I voted for Norman Forward. I was excited about it, I advocated for it, and I celebrated when it passed. And I have lived watching all these amazing things go up around us as an investment that we made in each other. That's what this was, was an investment in our lives. But I've always believed there was a gap in Norman Forward. There was a group of people who didn't have an investment in their quality of life. And so when I learned there was an opportunity to look at some gaps in Norman Forward currently and what might also be missing, I wanted to come down and talk to you about a group of people that I believe need an investment in their quality of life more so than probably anybody in our community. And that's people who are homeless. I mean, their lives literally depend on an investment we make in them. And this is not to say there's any project on that list that's not valuable. It's just there's an opportunity here, maybe a once-in-a-hundred-year opportunity to invest in the lives of people who live on the streets, literally right here in our community. And so I've been asked very regularly, so what do we do? So what do we do here in Norman to invest in the lives of people who are homeless? And so one of the things I decided to do was just ask them, what is it that you need as somebody who's living on the streets, day in and day out here in Norman? What is it that would work for you to help you get out of homelessness? And so my coworkers and I developed just a questionnaire, a simple needs assessment that we distributed to as many people who are living outside as possible. And we got 48 responses, which is a pretty good sampling based on the numbers that we know exist out, that are living outside. And we asked them a series of questions. Inside the report that should be coming to you guys is a sample of the questionnaire we sent out. We listed off some infrastructure investments that we believed as a team at Food and Shelter would help the lives of those living on the streets. And we asked them to identify their top three. And you'll see on the chart, there's like a bar chart on the second page, I wish I had enough for everybody, I don't, that the top three, overwhelmingly, the top three things that people who live on the streets tell us they need is a permanent night shelter without time limits. The second one is actual permanent supportive housing, housing that is affordable, safe, and has wraparound services, an expansion of many of the things we are already doing really well in Norman. And the third thing was a job placement job training center. So there are two, there are a couple of things that I extrapolated from that information, and it's not a research-based survey, it's just something we did within our community, is that people do want to be inside. They told us they want to be inside. I want to be inside. And they want to work. That's what that third thing told us, they want to work. But we also learned from many of the narrative things that came through is that if you slept outside last night and you woke up wet from the rain, the idea of going to look for a job is pretty low. You feel unclean, you feel invisible, you feel hopeless, you feel weak. Those are just a few of the things that people told us in this process. And so that permanent shelter, that night shelter piece is really critical for step one, because that gives our amazing continuum of care and opportunity to engage them in services on a more ongoing basis. And that's really, really important. But it also gives them the dignity, the human dignity of a bed. And that psychological and emotional motivation is really important. And so I know I heard earlier that we may not be considering that any longer. I would pray and hope and urge you to not drop this off the table because that we do have an opportunity to invest in people. They need it, they deserve it. And I hope that you would take their voices into consideration because they have the lived experience that several of us might not have. Last week I had, last month, I had the privilege going out to California to a national conference hosted by the National Alliance to End Homelessness. And I heard from many of our HUD executives, people as well. And what they told us, if you're going to respond to homelessness, street homelessness, encampments, an issue that's here in Norman that we're talking about all the time now, then you need to come forward with a solution. If you go to them and engage them and, you know, how can I help you, but you have no solutions, then what point is that engagement? And so their recommendation to us, both the National Alliance to End Homelessness and HUD, was to first get them into emergency shelter. But we don't have one to do that with. So we have to start there. I think that that piece is really critical. And so many of you probably got an email from me today inviting you to come to Food and Shelter and have a conversation with some of our guests who told us they want to speak with you. There were some of them here earlier, but the crowd size kind of intimidated them, so I'm not sure you'll hear from them tonight. But then I heard from Councilmember Hall that there might be a conflict later in the day. So I'm going to send you an amended invitation earlier in the day, and hopefully as many of you guys can come and have a more intimate conversation with some of our folks so they can share their own personal lived experiences with you. Because I believe this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to invest in the quality of lives of Norman cannot leave behind so many of our brothers and sisters and neighbors and friends. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to assume we're clapping for everyone, so. We, okay, thank you.
Rob Norman, Ward Three. I'd like to point out and thank some of the groups of people who are here tonight and make sure that everyone on council and everyone here in the room, who may not understand who they all are, who they are. I see representation from some familiar faces and some new faces, the Norman Youth Soccer Association, of course, Ball Clubs of Norman, the Sooner Swim Club, and of course, the Norman Optimist Club. Collectively and individually, we are all Norman. We are the mass of Norman. We are the entire city limits of Norman. We are not a little special interest group. We are not a little enclave off in one corner of Norman or another. We're everything. Hopefully you saw my email with the attachments today. All I can do is speak for our participation. And we showed that our participation is a mass participation in the sports we serve all across Norman. I'm sure the Norman Youth Soccer Association, Ball Clubs of Norman, I've heard a little bit about their numbers, Sooner Swim Club, all of us can show you that we are Norman. We are low-income Norman, we are middle-income Norman. Yes, we are, because we are in a suburb. We are affluent Norman too. But we are mass participation Norman. And we are all, I know for a fact from firsthand knowledge and working with these people, that we are all so much more already than we were in 2015 when some of us came in front of you. We have become a lot more. And why have we become a lot more? Why do we serve more children? Why do we serve more families? Why do we have more vision than we ever had? It's because of the vision and the legacy of Norman Forward. All the way from six to 80 years old, the senior center, the sports facilities, everything we have are for all of Norman. As the gentleman from ADG said, this is a legacy. And this is a moment Oklahoma City faced, when Oklahoma City really wasn't much to speak of. And Oklahoma City stepped up and did what it needed to do. And look what they are today. And look what we are today, just because of what they did. And look what much more we can become. We can become reliant and in control of our own destiny instead of depending on other towns and other entities that we've been so reliant on so far to do things. We can have the facilities that we voted on by 72% in 2015. And what we voted on then, we now know that we had too little of funding mechanism for that, and a regressive funding mechanism for that. But what we voted on in 2015 was not a limited funding mechanism. What we voted on in 2015 were projects. Projects that would make our lives better. And with the four groups I mentioned tonight, what we want to make better is the lives of our kids, all of our kids. We know there's a Norman Forward ordinance that has a mandate in it. Build these projects and build them to be accessible to everyone from the standpoint of affordability, from the standpoint of who can play, and who can get transportation back and forth to the facilities. That is what we need to do. I mean, I can tell you from this room, there are vast, vast, vast numbers of kids, vast, vast number of families who have better things to do tonight and couldn't get there and told me, I'm sorry, we support this, but we just can't get there tonight because of this or that. But I want you to know, we do have a full house tonight. And keep in mind this, we're all of Norman, and we care, and we count, and we vote. Give us that chance to vote and do this right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Mel Kozler. I'm from Ward Six, 1913 Inglewood Drive. Just want to make a few comments about what I've observed tonight. First, thank you, professionalism's really high. We've got a lot of kids here. This is a good example of city government and how things work and the civility of our government. I think that's really great. My first question, or really it's a comment, is there's an opportunity cost to waiting. It seems as though we voted some of these things in, and we waited so long that now the cost is double. Who's going to do the root cause analysis to figure out how we're going to fix our process? We should move faster on these things so that we don't end up in this boat again. All right. And I'd like, also like to talk about the tax burden. If you do communicate the desire to go for a bond or a tax increase, I think it's fair to the citizens of Norman to let them know what the tax burden is per capita. I mean, it's easy to say, hey, 10 bucks a month more, one penny a month, one penny a purchase, whatever. But what does that add up to for us? And how does that weigh against other communities in our state, in our nation? Tax burden, if you've been to California recently, somebody mentioned they were, you'll probably realize that it's suffocating. And we don't want to end up in that same boat. The third and final comment about the homelessness. I'm like anyone, I have compassion for people, but I don't think we should give anything away for free. There's a certain percentage of people who cannot take care of themselves. And we have an obligation to take care of those people, whether it's a physical or mental ailment. But at the same time, we need to be careful not to give something away with no expectation of work or some type of contribution on the part of the recipient to ensure that they have a stake, they have skin in the game, because we do. And we're also likely to invite a whole lot more people here. I would also recommend that we prioritize, we have the sons and daughters of the Norman area who need to be catered to first. There's a percentage of people who need to be catered to in any community. But if we're going to invite the world here because of the facilities we have, we need some reciprocation from them. They need to have skin in the game. So I would expect them to demonstrate their willingness to participate in work programs or education programs or wellness programs in exchange for the services we provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kent Nicholson. I'm serving on the multi-sport and the Aquatic Center Ad Hoc Committee. Coming from the aquatic side because I've been part of the Pisces Project for the last 20 years or so, trying to get a facility built in Norman that'll ensure the survival of swimming in Norman. And I just wanted to step up and say that the facility that is being proposed by the Ad Hoc Committee is the absolute right facility to be built for Norman. And if we build anything less than what is proposed, we're making a big mistake. I struggled with this throughout the Ad Hoc Committee meetings. And if you look at the minutes or watch it, you can watch me struggle with it because we're so time-sensitive and I, so much need, our community so much needs that pool. And so I really wanted to figure out some way we could get close to that budget or the budget plus, and we could get something going right away. But if you do that, you find yourself with problems. If you spend a bunch of money and you build yourself a small 25-yard pool, the day you move in, you're going to find yourself right back where we started. And we're going to be overrunning that facility and pushing people out that need to be taking advantage of that facility. And then if you take a half step forward, you say, well, okay, let's build two 25-yard pools, then what you find is, okay, we've solved a few problems, but now we've restricted the ability of the facility to bring in the revenue to pay for the facility. And then everybody's going to walk into that facility and they're going to go, man, that's really nice, but why didn't they just finish it and do it right? That's what I think we have to do with all of these projects. And this facility that is being proposed is an absolute goldmine. And it's a goldmine not because of the economic impact, which is real and significant and all good, but it's a goldmine because of the number of kids that are going to be able to take advantage of the facility. The number of kids that are going to be able to grow and develop in that water and on those courts is absolutely unbelievable. And it's going to happen year after year after year. The number of kids that are part of our free and reduced lunch community that are going to be able to grow and have an activity that's meaningful to them is going to be unbelievable. We don't want 3,000 teenagers with not a lot to do running around our town. And we're really not all that far away. We really aren't. So I just hope that we put it out there, we let everybody vote on it. I know we're going to vote for it because everybody needs this in this community. We cannot any longer rely on OU to take care of little Norman. We've got to step up and we've got to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mario Rosas, and I'm here on behalf of Ball Clubs of Norman, the Baseball and Softball League. So my wife and I are here tonight, and surprise, surprise, I couldn't convince my five-year-old and seven-year-old to attend another meeting. So surprise, surprise there. I do have a 16-year-old, and he's a sophomore in high school. Baseball's been a big part of our life, a big part of our family's life. And while I was sitting in the audience, I wanted to just, from memory, make a list of all the places that we played over the years. Edmond, Stillwater, Chickasha, Blanchard Tuttle, Mustang, Ada, Washington, Oklahoma City, Choctaw, Bridge Creek, Tulsa, Purcell, and of course, more. Those are just the places that I can think of in the past hour, okay? One place that my 16-year-old has never played baseball is in Norman, okay? So being that, being that that was the way, and now I've got younger kids coming up, I decided to get involved with baseball in Norman. So because I opened my mouth and kind of stepped in it, now... now I'm actually the director of Norman Ball Clubs of Norman. So what I wanted to just express to you guys tonight is that we have big plans. We have big visions for what we want youth softball and baseball to be in our community. As I went and got involved a couple of years ago and put my son on a team and we went to Griffin and we started playing and everything, I was just, I was just kind of amazed about like, you know, the facilities and the benches and the places that you sit and the backstops and bases, you know, basic things that just really weren't up to snuff. So I voted for Norman Forward. I was really excited for it. I've been excited for it this whole time. And I just really want to express to you how critical, important facilities are, okay? It doesn't have to be top of the line, although we would love for that. I want to express to you that we're willing as an organization to do our part. Just over this past year, we've, we've put money of our own back into the fields at Griffin. We've bought new bases. We've implemented a lot of new things that our parents and our coaches and our kids are going to see. We want to continue to do that. Nobody's going to get rich doing this. If at the end of the season, we spend the very last dollar back in, that's our goal. So what I really, really just want to express to you is that the Ball Clubs of Norman are here. We want to partner. We want to do everything that we can, but we need the facility. So I'll leave it at that and thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Fuentes, representing the Griffin Ad Hoc and also Norman Youth Soccer. Just wanted to take a second to say we have appreciated what Norman Forward has brought thus far. We have several projects, a couple that have been completed, one in process currently, and how it has benefited us as a club and as an organization and what we can offer to not just the youth, but all of the players that play at our association. And we are a large sports organization along with others that have spoken here tonight. And we are here to continue to support Norman Forward and the additional projects that will come. And we'll optimize the use of those to the benefit of our community, not just from an economic impact, but we're impacting predominantly youth, but people of all ages in our soccer community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Erin Gavigan. I'm a resident of Ward Four and I work in Ward Four. I'm the executive director of the Norman Arts Council. I am here tonight because we wanted to share that, first of all, we are very supportive of the Norman Forward projects being completed to their fullest capabilities. We understand that these projects are good for the entire community and we want to see them completed as well. I really appreciate Anthony Francisco's presentation on the different options of how those could be completed. Personally, I would urge the GeoBond as a possibility. But I also wanted to remind council that one of the projects that was included in Norman Forward was a one percent for art. And that if it is voted to increase the budgets of these projects, that that should also increase the budgets for the one percent for art. Eighty-five million dollars would mean another eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in public art. And it's very important that these public art projects are commensurate in size with the projects that they are paired with and that it's important for those budgets to match the projects. I would also add that art is not a luxury, it's not a privilege. It is a right of all of us. And art is how future societies will remember what we did here today. And so this is why we would argue for the eighty-five million to also include in addition for the one percent for art. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Ellis, six thirty-three Reed Avenue in lovely Ward Four. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I wanted to second April Hyple's comments about the needs of our homeless population in Norman. I've got three kids, all girls. I've coached softball and soccer and I know that those things are fantastic for kids. They're both great. But I really do think that the best lesson that we can teach Norman's kids is that we aspire to be an inclusive community. That's the sort of thing that we have been talking about for a while in town, probably longer than we've been talking about Norman Forward. And to be an inclusive community, I think we have to cut in all kinds of populations on the sort of gravy when it gets ladled out. And I fear that we're potentially losing track of who is benefiting from what in Norman. I'm more than willing to vote on a sports package, but I do think we need to put first things first. And that means if we need to have a package that includes the sort of things that April was talking about, I think we need to have a package that includes any potential funding needs that we have for our inclusive community needs that we just went through a process on. And I think we need to do them before all the money is gone, basically. So I'll vote for sports, but I won't vote for anything until we get the needs of Norman's neediest taken care of first. And I think it's very important to realize that if we look around the room tonight, this is not really all of Norman. All of Norman never comes to the city council meetings, right? Most of Norman stays away. A lot of people are working tonight. A lot of people have kids to take care of tonight. There are a lot of people who are freaked out by the crowds, as April was saying about some of her customers. But you don't have to be a homeless person to have that be the case. I think my kids are like that. So I think we need to think beyond just who's in the room right now and pay serious attention to the needs of all sorts of communities in Norman. I do also want to say, and this is a shout out to Anthony Francisco, GeoBonds are the way to go on all this sort of stuff. We need to diversify our tax base. I think that's very clear. And it's also less aggressive, which helps take into account how we can help needier people in the city. So I'm fine with going forward with all kinds of projects. But let's not go forward with any projects until we cut in Norman's neediest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any kiddos out there want to come talk to us about what Norman Forward means to them? I know they're leaving quickly.
I'm going to be a kid.
All right. We've got a big kid.
Thank you. It's great to be here. I am Tracy Gordon and I'm on an ad hoc committee, flag football, adult softball. I reside in Allison Patrone's Ward Three. And I'm a Normanite. I wasn't a Normanite. I came here and went to University of Oklahoma and stayed and, you know, met my lovely wife and, you know, stayed here and I have kids, I have four kids that partake in sports. And I'm a big sports person. And, you know, the cool thing is that we have in Norman is a great culture. We're all inclusive, you know? And if you go to the soccer fields, which I'm a soccer coach, and you see those kids and how sports impacts their lives, when you go, I coach softball. I have seven-year-old twin girls that they're excited about softball because, you know, we're making leaps and bounds to get these programs where they need to be, right? And, you know, it's all kind of rolled together. As you see, the Aquatic Center, all these things really, really impact Norman. And we have a duty as residents in Norman to try to see all these projects to fruition, right? Because, you know, there's adage in sports, it's not about us. It's about the people in the community, the kids. And the best way to invoke change in any community and the world is through kids, right? And, you know, sports brings everybody together. You know, we don't see color. You know, we don't see male, female. We just see people coming together for one common goal, right? And that just spills over into other aspects of our community, right? We have a special place here in Norman. You have people willing to donate their time, donate their money, whatever it looks like, for the betterment of our community. And I would just urge, you know, everyone on this board tonight to just kind of galvanize and bring this to the people so we can, we can really impact lives. Because this is a cool place to live in Norman, a special place. Because when I came here in nineteen eighty-six, I never envisioned that I would stay here and live here and be a part of this community. But it's a special place and people come here. And I think people outside of Norman admire what we have here. We're a unique community, right? We're a loving community. We're a community that will help each other in a time of need, okay? We have a great university here, right? We have the arts. We have all the things that make us special, right? So I'm really excited about all the things that could come to fruition with Norman Forward, the vision and the passion that we have to do this, right? You've heard from all the people tonight, the passion that we have, right? And we just don't want to lose that. We want to keep that, we want to grow that. And we want to transfer, transform our community from a special place to a special, great place, right? And that's what we're looking for. So I would just urge all to kind of keep that in mind and think about all the special people that we have here, all the kids that we can impact. Because those kids one day will be adults that'll be in our positions in the future, right? And that's what we want. We want to see our community grow and be and keep and be the special place that it is, right? So I thank y'all for allowing us to come in and speak. And we need to move this forward the way that we envisioned for it to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Campbell, Ward Six. I'm going to speak to y'all about lifestyle inflation. The family got together and decided the family are getting a much-needed quality family vehicle. The family is large and active and decide on a 2020 fully-loaded Cadillac Escalade. The teenagers are told they will get new economy cars soon. The Escalade arrives before the holidays. It is great. The family loves to show it off. In the afterglow, the family decides that the teens should now have Mercedes, BMWs, and Porsches. These cars will come with bragging rights. Friends from out of town will be allowed to ride in them, ferocious, braggadocious. The family cannot afford the sports cars. There is a problem here. The Escalade is our central public library. It serves all of our Norman family. Norman Forward Ad Hoc Committee meetings have been held in our Escalade. And these leaders are saying, all of our projects should be this nice, this state of the arts. But that is called lifestyle inflation, where when you get one very nice thing, you believe you can afford all very nice things. Ad Hocs have dug their heels in and have said, world-class or nothing at all. I voted for Norman Forward because it was about quality of life for our current residents. Competitive interests are taking, are talking about competitions every weekend, practices every night, and community access is now hardly mentioned. Now it is being hailed as a big moneymaker, a let's profit off Norman's kids. Kids' projects have priority because they are little moneymakers. I did not vote for Norman Forward so we could profit off kids. Our sales tax rate is eight point seven five percent, very close to the max of eleven point five. A general obligation bond, though not a sales tax, would put us in the onerous position of effectively nearing the eleven point five percent max. You know, there is a reason a person is not allowed to give blood in a frequency that is harmful, because a body needs time to replenish. Lastly, looking at what Norman Forward has been allowed to become, you would think Norman Forward has all the bases covered when it comes to basic needs. We don't. We don't have affordable inclusionary housing base to then allow the pie in the sky, state-of-the-art field of dreams. We don't have the nursing home beds for our aging boomer population to be having anxiety that concession stands be stocked with gray pupa. The poor, the poor were led to envision Sunday bus service. We came out to vote, then unceremoniously lost Saturday bus service. Citizens begged the city to tell us upfront what order Norman Forward projects would be. We knew in our hearts that we needed a senior center stat. We didn't get that. Heck, we even got a half-million-dollar bike park not in Norman Forward. Council does not have a surplus of political goodwill regarding Norman Forward. The senior center should be up and running. Our business communities once again have found their University of North Park savior. And now it's profiting off kids.
Thank you. All right, these girls are next, everyone.
Please, come on. I'll sit.
Okay. And be sure to introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Lorelei and I'm eight. I love soccer and, and I'd really like it if you, if you'd fix the fields because like, it's really special to, to me.
Thank you, Lorelei.
My name is Everly and I'm seven. And I really love soccer. And I would really like it if people that have jobs, if they would like to fix the soccer fields, because...
Keep, keep going, keep going.
Because all the soccer, because all of the soccer people really need them to play soccer. And if we don't have them, we can't really, we have to do them like somewhere else. And if we can't do them, we can't play really soccer that much.
Thank you, ladies. Follow that one, Mr. Fowler.
Yeah, I started to say, you talk about polar opposite. When I started with Norman Ford, it was December of 2010. And at that time, I was not a senior citizen and I'm now a senior citizen. So things have changed quite a bit. Out of that discussion came many ideas about what Norman Ford could be and what quality of life could be. And there were only four of us that started out with this conversation. In 2012, we grew to a group of about twelve individuals in this community. And we put together a nonprofit, put some money together. And we hired the Ripken Design Group to come in and do a market study and a feasibility study to take a look at what Norman should be looking at in the way of facilities, sports complexes, parks upgrades. The library was a big conversation at that time. And I'll tell you this, we started out with a long list of projects, probably about eight hundred million dollars worth of projects. And we narrowed it down to a little over two hundred million dollars worth of projects. And in that conversation, as we moved along, I began to inform the mayor at that time of what we were doing and kept her apprised of all of the projects, what our estimates of the projects were, the feasibility studies, and all of the information that we had. And at that time, she believed that we could probably spend about eighty million dollars on projects in Norman and that would encompass a central landmark library, some parks upgrades, and then some other things like that. And through what I would call probably very intense negotiations with the mayor at that time, we settled on about a hundred and fifty-five million dollars worth of projects, what you see presented today. So I wanted you to know that what we're talking about with Norman Ford today is essentially the projects we originally presented. It's about the same money as what we originally presented. And there's a little bit of an inflation factor there because these projects... And there's a little bit of an inflation factor there because these projects have become more expensive over time. Like I say, we began these discussions in December of 2010. So, um, the citizens of Norman have already spoken about how they feel about Norman Ford and these projects. And what we're really talking about is, do we really want to finish these projects? And I think clearly tonight, there is a will of the people that are willing to go to the polls and express their opinions at the polls as to whether they want to complete these projects and finish all of the Norman Ford projects. We have a beautiful landmark $40 million library that we have completed. Um, we have, uh, Westwood Pool. We have the tennis courts. Um, believe me, the Fowler's have enjoyed the library. We've enjoyed the Westwood Pool. These projects were for the children, the grandchildren, and the families of this community. That's what it was about. I hear this conversation come up, and I've seen it on the board, and it got xed out, about the economic, uh, impact that it could have on Norman, Oklahoma. I can tell you that while we were aware of that from the very beginning, never was that the focus of Norman Ford. Norman Ford was always about the families of this community, the parents, uh, the children, the grandchildren of this community. And we tried to include as much in that package as we possibly could. We met with many, many people in this community to get their input, to make sure that we prioritize the projects. And this is what the citizens wanted. And when they voted, 72% of the voters said, "You got it right." So I encourage you to finish Norman Ford. I wasn't going to speak about the homeless, uh, uh, situation in Norman. But since Dr. Ellis brought it up, we do have a big homeless problem, not just in Norman, Oklahoma, but in the United States of America. I don't know that Norman has the financial resources to fix that problem. I think it's going to take the federal government understanding the problem that we have. We can spend $5 million in Norman, and we can create a warming shelter, and we can do our part. But that's not going to fix the problem on homelessness in, in, in the country. It's a, it's a federal problem. It's a national problem. Los Angeles, California has 69,000 homeless people in the Los Angeles area tonight. So I encourage you to listen to Dr. Ellis, listen to April Hyple. And if there's room in this project for, uh, an additional $5 million, I strongly encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alva Brockus. I'm Ward Two. Um, I sit on the Ad Hoc Committee for the Indoor Aquatic Center Multisport Facility, longest name ever. I have a laundry list of things I could say. You guys have all heard me say it. Um, what I wanted to kind of tease out was this idea of vision, and, and I'd like to stick onto it, being bold. Um, I have a vision. I have a huge vision for how an aquatic center would be used. I have a, a vision for the aquatic center that starts at birth and ends at death. And I'll bore you all with it if you want. But Norman's got this opportunity. We've got this opportunity to look forward and to look at what Norman needs now, but also 50 years from now. And we've spent a lot of time trying to wedge our, our government as small as it can be, use the smallest budgets we can. And I'll be the first to admit, I don't have a lot of money. I've spent a lot of time at home wedging my budget. But sometimes you really have to stop. And you have to look. And you have to say, "I can keep trying to do this the smallest, cheapest way possible, or I can do this right." And by doing this right, I can do something that will last, that will benefit the whole community. And that will be something that Norman can be proud of, that the citizens can benefit from, and that will last for a very long time. And so I would like to encourage you all to be visionary, but also bold. Um, just, just do it. It's, we know it's good. We watched Oklahoma City do it. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Price. I live in Ward One. And I'm speaking from several hats. I'm on the Citizens Financial Oversight Board for Norman Ford. I'm also on the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee, dealing with the Emergency Operations Center. And I was a city employee for 40 years and wrote the capital budget for a number of those. So I'm familiar with the financing aspects and the needs of the city itself in terms of the maintenance facilities and these facilities down here. One of the things we worked for, for a long time, was to try to get financing back to deal with the physical structures that we had as a city. For many years, we didn't take care of them. And we started finally to look at fixing roofs and replacing water heaters and fixing air conditioning and heating, because those things were really critical. And so even though I think Norman Ford is incredibly important, and I serve on that board, and I think the EOC needs to be done appropriately so that it is hardened and it has a space to do what we need to do, I think it's also critical to remember that we need to take care of our own facilities. And, and we started planning these moves, I can't, I think it was well before everybody was talking about. Talking about moving Building A into the, the library. And I was in Building A for most of those 40 years. And it's still not done. The court is still in this little tiny facility. And police need that space, and the court needs to move into Building A. There are just so many needs that need to be addressed. I also, as part of my job, dealt with homelessness. Um, hired Michelle Evans, who is now the homeless coordinator in Norman. And that is a huge need. And I, even though that wasn't a part of the discussion tonight as a whole, the fact that it has been interjected, it obviously is a need. And since we are going to be closing the library to the homeless and not having a warming shelter at night, is obviously going to create a need. And those people are all going to be back out on the street, which impacts the parks and other things as well. So I think, um, based on all of the discussions, that we really need to move forward with this as efficiently as we can. I think GO bonds are the only solution. It's very clear that using an aggressive tax that is, has less impact than it used to because we aren't getting those taxes anymore anyway, to depend on that resource would be foolishness. I think Anthony's absolutely right. GO bond's the only way to go. It makes sense. It is progressive. And I urge you to move forward and start this process on March, uh, 24th. And let's do this for Norman. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening. Cynthia Rogers, Ward Four, um, also on the Norman Forward Citizen Financial Oversight Board. So you've seen our reports. Um, I'm also an economist. And one of the things I teach in Econ 101, which is actually 1123, um, we teach about affordability and desirability and how we have constrained optimization problems, which is what we have here. We have all the things we want, the first-class sports facility. I grew up a pool rat. I was a diver. I was a Division One scholar athlete. I really value, um, my experience in the pool, working at the pool, or it put me through college. Um, fabulous pools are great. Fabulous sports facilities are great. Um, but here's my concern. And I, I, I think there's a big difference between all or nothing. Sometimes there's something that gets us the ability to do the type of programming and outreach and provide opportunities for the broadest number of kids in town. And that might not be what we're planning right now, and it might be, but I'd like to have those discussions. My big concern is, just not that long ago, we were asking for money for stormwater. And we were telling the community that this is one of our major needs. This is a priority. And we didn't get the voters to approve it. Um, if we push this through very quickly, because I, I mean, there, there's, I would say, an artificial rush to, uh, secure the money here, what, what does that do to our stormwater needs and the other needs that we have? The one thing we know from public finance and, uh, looking at voter support is there's this, um, there's a thing that happens, and it's called voter fatigue. And if you keep asking people for more money, like I heard we were going to have to ask for a stormwater rate increase, they remember, "Hey, didn't we just pay for something? Didn't we just pass an increase here?" And, um, the first time we pushed Norman Forward before, which I supported, um, I had a discussion with, with, uh, Mayor Rosenthal. And I was like, "Ah, I think we should ask for the stormwater first. I think we should do the needs before we do the wants." Because I'm pretty sure in this community, people will support Norman Forward-type projects. What we know is it's harder to get them to support the needs. I, I also definitely agree with this, the GO bond approach. Um, I worry about segmenting it, that we'll get the same thing that we got the transportation bond and not the stormwater, that we'll get the Norman Forward sports stuff, and we won't get the municipal needs. So those are concerns that I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Paul Arcrolle, Ward Three. It's so nice to see all your faces. I haven't been around in a while. I wanted to start out and, uh, thank you all for what you're doing, what you do every day. You probably don't hear that enough. And I will personally apologize for that. But I do recognize that this is a very difficult job, and you don't get enough credit. I also want to say is that, uh, none of you are to blame for anything that's happened up to this point in that all this discussion and stress over these projects and funding and not funding have nothing to do with you, and it has something to do with history and the way this, we, we run our city government or fund it. So I suggest that one of the things is you have a unique opportunity to, uh, clean this slate and to look at this with fresh eyes, and suggest that there are creative ways of looking at this. Looking at new projects, looking at quality-of-life projects. I mean, the recognition is that we have quality-of-life projects that we want to have, but we also have infrastructure projects that we need. We need stormwater. We need to protect our lakes. We need, we need clean water. We need sidewalks. We have all of those things, and none of those are very sexy, and they're all very hard to pass, but they are all very, very important. And you have, I mean, difficult choices to make. You can go for the fun stuff, and we'll get that passed, and still we'll be dealing with the hard stuff. So I suggest thinking with clean, uh, with new eyes, new, new approaches. Maybe thinking a little creatively about how things can actually be funded. It's interesting that, uh, Norman Municipal Hospital has been very creative in their approaches and how they have become a municipal hospital, not just a Norman hospital, but beyond just this community. And they're thinking beyond just servicing one community's needs. And, and maybe there's some lesson to be had there about how we look at the lifestyle sorts of things that we want to have. Maybe there's a, there's an opportunity, if we stop thinking in terms of regional boundaries, in terms of landmass, and think of how we could actually have all these structures. I mean, nobody wants to think of the idea of sharing a pool with more. My gosh, you know, it's not that, really that far away, or a soccer field, or any of those things. And, and I suggest that, and I'm not, I want, and I know it'll make a lot of people mad just even talking about that, but there are, are creative ways of thinking about how to create the lifestyle that we want and, and also paying for the things we need. So I'd suggest that, well, also, by the way, we have pool. We have schools. We have high schools that, that house children, and that have gyms, and have pools. Maybe creative ways of expanding that out, so it's not just a school function, but a community function. You know, I don't know if any of this is possible, but again, if you look at things with clean, with new eyes, maybe there are other ways of solving this problem. So I suggest that we continue to look at that and not consider just geographic boundaries because it would happen to be in Norman. Regional boundaries, I mean, consider, consider Lifestyle Center, Cleveland County Lifestyle Center that's going to be built. It's not just for Norman. They're building, or the churches that build their own gyms or their own pools. There are lots of ways of doing things. So I would just suggest each of you to think of those in those terms. That, by the way, was all personal stuff. Uh, I'm also, by the way, uh, Vice President of the, of the Senior Union. And, uh, I have, and I have a message to deliver. I assume that everybody here, I hope everybody here received a copy of the letter from the Senior Union from David Beck, the President of the Senior Union. Did anybody not receive a copy on the council? Okay, I, and I asked that because I didn't want to repeat the entire contents of the letter, but I, I did want to make sure that our message was delivered. Specifically is that we appreciate what the, uh, what the Ad Hoc Committee has done and, and recommended. But that is not necessarily the position of the Senior Union, which is not just a, just a, a subgroup of seniors. The Senior Union is, is goal is to represent 23,000 seniors 55 and older in this community. And although we are not opposed to moving, uh, a facility to the Porter area, we would ask that we look very carefully and ask very hard questions about what that means. Uh, we always would like to be considered an independent facility. We would love to have the hospital's money, but that doesn't mean we want the control that might go along with that. So there are conversations that need to be had. Uh, nobody should be jumping. The Ad Hoc Committee has done a great job, and I would hope that going forward, that we'd be considered a, a new committee to look at the overall construction and the built, and the building of that as we go on and move forward. Anyway, if you have any questions, I appreciate your time. And again, I really do, I really do, I mean, personally, I really appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for your commitment to service to the city. I appreciate every one of you, the city staff, and all the elected officials. Uh, formerly of Ward Six, heading into Ward Eight, business owner in Ward Four. Boy, there's a lot to unpack here. Uh, as far as the municipal campus projects, the fleet maintenance, the, um, the things that are necessary for the inner workings of the city. Boy, I just don't know how we build to less than the standard of what's recommended by the Ad Hoc Committees. Seems to me like anything else we do is a Band-Aid. We're just going to become a back-up project a few years from now when we, when we outgrow the size of what we can afford to do at the moment. So I just don't know how we don't go back to the voters and say, "This is what we need to keep you safe, to keep this city running in the manner that you expect it to run. It's just what we're going to have to do." Um, when it comes to, I'm going to, I'm going to finger quote here, "The fun stuff." You know, so my kid plays soccer. Um, super cute when she was up here. Going to melt down when we leave this meeting. Just, it's getting kind of late. Um, but, uh, that fun stuff. Look, nobody's going to question how meaningful participation in sports is for, for youth, the things they learn from it. I played baseball at Griffin and Reeves as a kid. I played soccer with NYSA when they were only a few years old. Played optimist basketball. Learned a lot. Still have great memories of it. So, but to me, as a business owner, for those of you who don't know, I'm one of the partners with the Good Life Hospitality Group. We operate Blackbird, Blue, the library, and Brew House.
Go ahead and say your name for the record, too.
Ryan Robinson, sorry. So, this isn't just the fun stuff. We can say that it's making money on the backs of children. Well, that wasn't the intent of these projects when they were set forward. The intent was, ask Normanites what they, what they want for quality of life. But hey, how great is it if what we want for quality of life is also revenue generating and a plus for the budget of the city? So, NYSA had a big soccer tournament this weekend. Um, there were teams whose, who, I don't always recognize the club, but I recognize their jerseys. I see them as I travel around the state doing travel soccer. We had a break on Sunday and on Saturday between our games, and I went to check on the restaurants. And in each of our restaurants, there were jerseys from these other clubs from around the state. They were, and, and listen, our restaurants are not the closest restaurants to the soccer fields. They're not the most family-friendly of the restaurants in Norman. They're not the chains that most people think about. So the fact that people found our restaurants, came in and spent money, and generated tax dollars, I can only imagine what they were doing at the closer restaurants, the, the more known restaurants. Then I walked around Campus Corner. There were people shopping Campus Corner. You know how rare it is that people are really, truly shopping Campus Corner on a Sunday? But this Sunday, there were people out there shopping the retail stores. And it was parents with little kids wearing soccer jerseys, clomping around in cleats. Yeah, it's the fun stuff. That's great, but it's also revenue generating. And when, when you all on the council are experiencing decreases in sales tax revenue, trust me, you're not feeling that until after. I've already felt it in decreased sales. And that's a thing in Norman right now. The question is, what are we going to do about it? We're going to have to invest in the future. We're going to have to spend some money to do it. And in this case, that's going to mean going back to the voters and letting the voters decide. Last note, when it comes to the homeless population and what we're going to do about that, I believe that we are judged based on how we treat the most vulnerable among us. I'm sure all of you believe that's true, too. So if I put on my veil of ignorance, to use my political science degrees term, there are roughly 5,000 professional athletes in the United States. In any given night in the U.S., there are more than half a million people living on the streets. It is far more likely that anybody's kids from this room are more likely to be homeless than a professional athlete. So we're going to need to take care of that. That, to me, is more important than maybe any other project that we're addressing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comment? Comment up, 99. Oh, no, hey, you stood up. That's how it works in the classroom. Your hand goes up and I'm going to call on you. No pressure, no pressure. Any other public comment? Yes, we can, but we've had a request for a break. So let's do a quick three-minute break. Okay, probably five. Stretch your legs, go to the restroom, and then we will resume with council comments. Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming tonight and for those of you that shared your thoughts, it's very helpful and I appreciate your time. We are now going to turn it over to council members and we already have members in the queue. So to start us off, Councilmember Carter.
Well, I want to thank Jason Anthony for your presentation. That was a very logical, well-thought-out, organized presentation, I think, that summarized our situation, you know, quite well. I'm enthusiastically for your concept. I'm enthusiastically for the GO bond aspect of it. And I think this is for the kids and I think this is for the seniors and I think this is for the people of Norman that need emergency services and public safety. And all of these projects that have been listed are projects that have already been approved by the voters of Norman. They are embraced already by our community. I think we have to do this right. I think that's what I got out of your message, is that this is doing it right. And with the, one project that I have a lot of firsthand experience with was the animal shelter, was not done right and the first time. And here we are, five, someone made a comment, we're five years later and we're back, you know, looking, fixing that issue. So I think we had the opportunity to do this right the first time. We're doing this for the kids, we're doing it for the seniors. And in terms of the seniors, what this does, it gives us certainty. That's the most important and most critical thing about this whole concept. We're not, you know, we've been, as Mr. Francisco said, we've been trying to stitch pieces together now for the last six months. You know, is somebody going to donate money and give us money to help this project? Are we going to do this and have funds? You know, it's just this quagmire of, you know, uncertainty. And, you know, this gives us certainty and I do believe that time is of the essence. So I do think that it's time for us to move forward with it. These projects have been vetted and I think like Councilmember Patron said last week, that really hit with me about how really these projects was about a $200 million plan, you know, and we just saw our revenue source only to accomplish about 150 of it, you know? So there's, you know, there has been some inflation over time, you know, but we're not that far off. And I really appreciate the comments of Mr. Fowler in the back, giving us the historical perspective. This is something that the community's worked on for a long time and I couldn't embrace it any stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. In clarification for my part, you mentioned supporting all of the projects, but then referred to for the seniors and for the kids. Are you supporting the municipal projects as well because those were also supported by voters?
Yeah, the municipal, yeah, yeah. The transportation, maintenance facilities, the emergency service vehicles.
And you're referring to the approved public safety sales tax, transit sales tax, and 2008 bond, of which part of the remodel was a part of.
Exactly. Yeah, every one of these have been already approved by the voters.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scott.
Okay, thank you. Can y'all hear me in the back? Awesome. Excellent. Thank you all for coming and expressing and letting us hear your voices tonight. I have a couple of comments and then some questions. So big no for me on any kind of sales tax increase or extension. Y'all all know how I feel about taxes. So would like to look at the GO bond, also supportive of what Ms. Hypal said earlier as well as Mr. Robinson and others who voiced that we should be trying to prioritize projects for the most vulnerable among us, the homeless population. No Ward eight also has a large homeless population in the Sutton Wilderness Area. I do wonder about if a GO bond is going to expire, how do we maintain funding for any kind of program? We sort of include any kind of new project or include in a GO bond? Just wanting to make sure that that has security long-term because homelessness is going to be an issue just continually. So am supportive of that, would like to look into that and how that would look. Also supportive of what Erin from the Arts Council, big fan of the arts myself. It isn't necessarily a luxury or a privilege. Anybody who follows me on social media sees that I'm working with some cardboard right now and very cheap paint. It's very, it's very therapeutic and so I think that she's absolutely right since we are going to go back to the voters and we are going to ask for an increase, in my opinion, probably the property taxes via the GO bond, and then I think that we should increase spending through the arts. Now, the questions I have for probably Anthony or maybe the bond folks would be, so there was a slide earlier that had the houses, the property value being, you know, this over $250,000 at $17 a month. Do we know how many properties there are at each sort of level?
Generally speaking, it's, it's sort of a slanted bell curve in, in the bell at its highest point at the median. So there's a lot of houses in the 80 to $120,000 range, a lot of houses 120 to 140, and then not very many above like 800,000.
Okay.
So, so yes, there are statistics on that.
Okay. And so if tonight council decides that they'd like to move forward and put a GO bond on the ballot, maybe for June 30th or maybe August would be better since taxes aren't sexy for whatever reason. And that's a big voting date, would it be June 30th? I don't know if necessarily we want to do that or if we want to aim for an August runoff. Anyway, so assuming we want to go forward with that, we would be looking, would you all be looking at how long that bond would last and then also what is needed to fund the projects at their highest?
The assumptions behind the figures that were on that slide were based on a 20-year maturity.
20-year, okay. Thank you. And that would be all for me.
Brittany and I, Brittany and I are playing buttons now, sorry. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
I just want to thank everybody first to start out with, and I do have some questions and then some comments in a little bit, but is Mr. Cotton still here? Last week I got asked if you had the breakdown of the multi-sport facility in the Aquatics Center. And to my knowledge, it wasn't sent over. Do you know, can you tell me what that is this week?
If you give me a few minutes, I can look it up. I've got it on a document on my phone.
Great. Thank you. I think the next question would be for probably Mr. Francisco. Do you know if, and I guess I could have asked Mr. Roses if he's still here, but has Ball Clubs of Norman met about the Reeves Park plan or the ball club side of it? If you can come up to the mic so that it's on record.
There, there are board members who are a part of the ad hoc committee and so they've been involved with the plan.
And are they a part of the ad hoc committee for all of Reeves Park or just for the?
I don't know.
There's not two different ad hoc committees, is there? Okay, so I guess my question would be, have you all as a board discussed the Reeves Park plan for how the ball fields are laid out? I'm not trying to talk about the senior center side of it or the...
Right. Yeah, we've, we've discussed it. There are a few things that we think that might... There are a few things that we think that might, might help. I don't, there's nothing major. I mean, layout seems to be okay, you know, mainly revolving around tournaments and gates, basically controlled entries and things like that.
Okay. I would appreciate if you all wouldn't mind putting together something for council and having it emailed over, like a letter giving us, advising us on what changes might need to happen there because it's important that, you know, you have one shot at this.
Okay.
So it's important that you give some input and make sure that it's
Okay.
developed in the way that makes sense for both baseball and softball.
Okay, one thing that I've forgotten since I'm back up here that is really important to us that I don't think anybody's really talked about and I saw it in the plan, is the inclusionary field. And those, that's the turf field that basically gives, you know, we want to serve all of the kids in Norman. We're not, there were some comments earlier about, you know, the tournaments and the competitive and everything like that. We exist to serve all kids who want to play ball, okay? So that could be from any income level, it could be from rec all the way up. But also the inclusionary field is a very important part of that. Moore has something called a Courage League and so it's for children in wheelchairs and?
Mr. Rosa's, I'll jump in and let you know that we are working on a Miracle League for Norman.
Okay, perfect.
So that is on the radar. It may not be in Reeves Park. We're looking at an alternate location that could be more, I'd say, accessible to even other populations in our community that could use it, but it's very much on our radar.
Okay, great. And we'd love to be a part of that and support that any way that we can.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, if you can have a meeting fairly soon and maybe submit some things, some recommendations to council so that we have those.
Okay, will do.
From the horse's mouth.
Sure, thanks.
I was going to take a shot at answering your question. I wanted to apologize that that didn't information get to you. So we talked about a total project cost of $58.8 million for that facility last week and also this evening. And so the way that's divided between those two projects, so indoor aquatic is 35.7 million and indoor multi-sport is 23.1. So there's some conventions we have to follow. I mean, obviously there's common circulation space between those programs and so it's, it becomes an exercise of trying to figure out which square foot belongs with which program, but that's kind of where we've arrived at. Does that help?
That does help. Thank you. Mr. Francisco, a resident came forward and asked, what is our tax burden per capita in the city of Norman? Do you know what the answer to that would be?
No, although we do publish that in the Comprehensive Annual Finance Report each year. I did not bring that, but I can tell you that our overlapping tax burden is the lowest in the region.
Thank you. I just thought I'd get his question answered. Okay, so there were supposed to be some other projects that were spoken about tonight on behalf of, from city staff. Is there a part three to this where we're going to talk about the bailing bridges and? The day shelter was going to be on it and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember. I had actually asked Mr. Sturts about that earlier today and told him to be prepared to answer that question. So hopefully he'll have some information for you.
That is not currently one of the items that we're adding to this. Sorry, Scott Sturts, City Engineer. But it is something that we are actively looking into. As you know, we brought it forward in our capital improvement program and we showed you those numbers. And, you know, we are looking forward to moving that forward. Right, and basically what we looked at was a five-year program. And in that five years, we had noted, we had found five bridges that we thought were the highest. Norman currently has 77 bridges. About 16 of those are considered in really bad shape. I'm just going to use simple terms instead of the technical terms. We have another three that are on the verge of becoming on that critical list. We have almost a third of our bridges that are built prior to 1950. So they're 70-year-old bridges and that's enough to make us nervous in our field. But when we started looking at those bridges, we have a great program where the state of Oklahoma helps us pay to have bridge inspections done every two years. And we have a new firm that's doing that for us. And we requested some additional information this time so that we could do a little bit more analysis and try to prioritize those bridges in a much more effective way than we've been able to in the past. And so we took those, we looked at that and we kind of got that ranking. And we picked those top five bridges and five of them need replacement as quickly as possible. And we looked at our five-year program. Costs were basically for construction only between $900,000 and $1.4 million for each bridge. And then we also were recommending an increase in the maintenance budget by $400,000. We currently put $100,000 a year into that maintenance budget. That money goes very quickly when you start trying to do rehab on a bridge and trying to do any work that's substantial enough to increase the lifespan or the safety of that bridge structure. So we're asking another $400,000 a year for that also. If we were to lay out a program that we would be comfortable with, that we'd really like to move forward with, we would look at a program and we're looking at funding opportunities. We're having, we're struggling to find opportunities for bridge programs right now, either state or federal. We keep hearing that there's some county money and we're pursuing that. There may be some money that's available to counties. We don't know if Cleveland County is tapping into that or if we can do that. But our ultimate program would be about $3 million a year. That would allow us to replace two bridges a year. That would get those 16 bridges replaced in eight, in eight years roughly. And then the $500,000 a year for maintenance during that same timeframe.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is somewhere, okay, Ward 3 is particularly sensitive to the failing bridge issue. We really dodged a bullet with any of our residents not dying when the Main Street Bridge completely washed out. So I know that my ward is very supportive of replacing bridges. So when I'm, it makes me a little bit nervous to hear you say that it's going to be a few years. If they're, you know, what you stressed to us in study session was that these particular five bridges are, they're hazardous, they're very dangerous. So I would be interested in adding these five bridges into this bond. So if that is, if you're talking about between $900,000 and $1.4 million for one bridge to save a life, it sounds to me in the grand scheme of things that that's worth it. So if you wouldn't mind getting us those numbers with particularity and then maybe we can start working on the yellow bridges that are on a whole other list of not quite as serious, that couldn't fail tomorrow, but they're going to fail within the next few years? Let's start trying to, you know, get those bridges taken care of. So if you wouldn't mind giving, submitting those to us again, like a breakdown of just those because that was one slide at the time?
Yes, and I had that in front of me and we can actually submit that. It comes up to a little over $5.6 million. That's construction only. We do need to consider costs for design. And also with many of these structures, because of the way that they were constructed, we need to actually make the larger structures, which means we also have to get a little bit of right-of-way, a little bit of easements from the adjacent property owners to make sure to construct them properly. And also, part of the reason a lot of people look at these and go, why are these so expensive? It is because we're meeting all the regulations that are current instead of the old regulations of just find the biggest tin horn you can and put it under a roadway. We're also having to raise a lot of these roadways so that we get them up out of the floodway. So sometimes they entail doing a little bit longer stretch of road than actually just the bridge itself because we're actually going to raise that by several feet to where it's no longer flooded and makes it a travel impairment to the public.
Okay, so do you think that $7 million would cover?
In rough numbers, that would be, should be sufficient.
Maybe we should probably also tell the public where they're at.
We do have the map. And we had, that map was also a part of the CIP presentation.
Thank you.
And many of the, some of these structures are actually the load-posted structures so they actually have load-posted signs on them to alert people to a bridge that may not be able to handle full capacity weight.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sturts, I had asked about every, you know, we passed five-year packages of road maintenance improvements. Would it be possible to include bridges in that so we could keep it all transportation improvement themed?
That is certainly another option for funding that would be available that we could look into further. We have one more year left, so FYE '21 will be the final year of the current five-year program that we have, that the bonds are funding. So staff is currently working on the list for the next five years. We've been very successful in doing that in five-year programs and that is something that we could obviously explore with that. Of course, that's going to take away from the number of roadways that we can rehab or reconstruct. And so it's going to be a balancing act of how we'd want to attack that and what everybody's comfortable with on how we'd want to go forward with that type of program. I do not know of a reason why that could not be included as a part of that program.
And including bridges in that program wouldn't raise taxes because it would be kind of a re-upping of what we're currently committing.
That's correct. That's a no increase tax. It would be just prolonging the sales tax. So basically we're just asking for authorization to continue collecting that tax so that we can continue that bond program. And so that's an option that could be available.
That one's property tax, not sales tax. And then in theory, since it's property tax, as overall property values in our community go up, we have more money to work with each year. So we may not have to cut out as many road projects as we think, assuming property values continue to go up in Norman.
We have been fortunate that every time that we've re-upped the five-year program, we have had more funding capacity and been able to do more work.
Okay, thank you.
And when does it expire, you said again? '21?
Yes.
So do you feel pretty confident that they're going to hold up until our next transportation bond?
I've got to admit, I've not been out there and inspected each one independently. They haven't told us at this point. We have a very detailed list and there are a couple of them that they're concerned with, but I do not know that any of them are?
There are a couple that are more concerning than others. I mean, I feel like that's what we're sitting here for. And if we're going to be sending something to the voters, I think they feel like they would want to drive across a bridge that's safe.
We could certainly go back and look at the consultants.
Almost lost the former councilmember that was sitting in this seat, the Main Street Ridge.
We could certainly go back and look at that list again. They gave us some very clear what needs to be done and a very nice priority ranking. We can go back and look at that again and look at that priority ranking and see if there's something that we feel is truly of a critical nature.
Thank you. Okay, and then Mr. Francisco, on the slide about the bond amount, what was the total amount of the bond?
The assumption behind that slide was the full $121 million.
$121?
Yes.
Okay, and just so I understand correctly, Mr. Francisco, this is assuming that the Norman Forward sales tax would continue. Is that correct?
Yes, there, as I understand your question, there's no, if we were to propose that a general obligation bond be forwarded to the voters, there would be no change to the Norman Forward sales tax that's hopefully providing for the base budgets for each of these projects. This proposal would be kind of for the overruns, if you will, the amount.
So we have the RTA that we're going to be sending to the voters at some point in the near future and we're going to need sales tax money by law to fund the RTA. Would it be possible to have a shorter Norman Forward sales tax plan and a higher bond plan? In other words, adjust it up on the bond and shave off years on the sales tax?
Theoretically, that would be possible. There would be some complications in that we would have to pay off the existing bonds that are backed by the existing sales tax before that could be done. But theoretically, yes, that could be done. It's just it'd be complicated.
If we were able to look at some different plans, just so that we have the ability when our partner cities want to send the RTA to the ballot, that they're, you know, that we're able to do that as well, I would be interested in knowing what that, what those different variations could look like.
Quick clarification, I wrote in my notes $112.7 million for the whole bond and you said $121?
I probably reversed the number. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was just making sure that I didn't reverse it. Thank you.
Okay, I can skip that question, I think somebody else asked about it. And now, let's see. Okay, as for the homeless shelter, well, the day shelter. So Mr. Scanlon and Sarita Wilson and Lee Hall and myself and a whole lot of staff that give a ton of their time. There, we meet weekly for the homeless task force. It's not, you can have a seat if you want to. And so I guess the way that I felt about how it was brushed off so quickly right up at the beginning when I know that this is something that's really important to our city manager as well and clearly our people of this city find this to be of the utmost importance as well. I think that it's, it's something that we need to be able to send at the same time because they're absolutely right. This is a quality of life for all of our residents and they are our residents too. Even though they're unsheltered, it doesn't make a difference. They have every bit the same quality as, and they matter just as much as anybody else sitting in this room. So for me, it's extremely important that we are moving forward and taking everybody with us and that progress is made for everyone. So I look forward to including them in this because to me, everybody in here has spoken about it. It's important to them too. I want you all to know that the emergency shelter was a really touching experience for this city and it was a huge success as far as a measurement of how many new faces that we were able to get into services. We had over 200 new, unique faces, names that are now known to us that weren't prior to it opening just this last couple of months. And it's closed now, which was a difficult, difficult day. But because we're, so I guess what I'm wanting to express is that to see people have that opportunity, that they're not sleeping unsheltered, they're not sleeping outside, and then they're coming in and they really are partaking of not just services that the city of Norman has, but all along the continuum of care, that's what we want to see. We're providing opportunity. And so I want to make sure that the capital costs for the homeless day center, which can double as a warming shelter or a seasonal shelter, as well as the continuum of care offices, to make sure that they are receiving services from Veterans Affairs or, you know, they all come in and use office space to be able to reach out to better lives. That's extremely important to me. As much as I enjoy my kids having amazing new facilities and the seniors deserve amazing new center, we deserve to be bringing these residents along with us and not leaving people behind. So that's how I feel about that and I just, I couldn't not say something.
Yeah, well, if I might add a comment here. I got a couple of comments after the presentation and I do feel that I brushed over that part of the presentation a little too quickly and so my apologies. That was, I certainly echo your sentiment and as I mentioned, you know, it's obviously a very important thing for the community. I think as I described, you know, we obviously have been through this information collection process over the last couple of months. And so I will tell you, ADG was not involved in any of the previous work that the city did in regards to the homeless shelter. And so we've been very much playing catch-up, I think, a little bit over the past couple of months. I do feel like we got a lot of really good information from Lisa Craig and the rest of the planning department. They were very helpful in kind of getting us up to speed as best they could. And like I said in the presentation, we spent a lot of time up in Oklahoma City talking to Dan Strong with the Homeless Alliance and the programs they offer. So we very much see that is a need that needs to be addressed. I think that where we arrived is we were, we felt like that as a part of this information gathering, we, there were still a lot of questions, I think, that we needed to figure out. And so some of these I mentioned, you know, trying to figure out who the operator is, trying to make sure that we're not duplicating services that other agencies in the community are providing. And I think also like making sure that we're providing a holistic solution that's going to help remedy the issue. And so things like affordable housing got brought up in the conversation. And so everybody that I've talked to very much wants to see this happening, you know, including our office. We feel like it's very important for the community. But I do feel like there was this sense of wanting to make sure we do it right. And so, you know, in that sentiment, we have, my understanding is staff is in the process of requesting a capital budget or capital expenditure in order to retain a consultant to help the city understand strategically how to move that project forward as best that we can. And so, you know, I think for that reason, we didn't go into more detail this evening. And so I didn't mean to brush over it, but that's kind of our understanding of kind of where things are as of right now.
Okay, and I do appreciate you going out to the Oklahoma Homeless Alliance in Oklahoma City. But if you would like to come meet with us, we meet every Tuesday, right in that room there.
Okay.
The city of Norman has a homeless task force and we have been meeting for months and have been talking about these issues in depth. And so I actually have from today's meeting some bullet points that staff's already put together. that staff's already put together on vision that they have. So if, I think there might, I don't know where these discussions have gone, but I can tell you that we're clear that we, we know where the next step is. We know that we have capital costs that need to get covered. And so, this is the capital cost, that's what a bond is. And so, I wanna make sure that it's in it. Thank you. And I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Bierman.
So I have questions and comments at the 10,000-foot level, the 5,000-foot level, and then at the one-foot level. So, let's start with just some procedural questions. It was commented that Norman Forward projects and municipal complex projects must be separate ballot issues, even if voted on the same day. Can someone explain to me why that is? Why can't they be in one ballot language? One item, you vote once, cake and vegetables at the same time. Not cake or vegetables, because I think we all know what people will pick.
Very valid point. I will say, and I will defer to bond council if I misspeak in any way. But, these were just general discussions that we had had. But understand that the restrictions for what can be placed on a ballot in a combined setting for a general obligation bond are much more strict than what can be combined on a ballot for a sales tax. You have to tell the voters what they are going to pay for with a general obligation bond, and where there are distinct differences in the sorts of projects that are being proposed. The Attorney General almost always rules for segregation of the projects. So, in this case, where all of the Norman Forward projects are these park-related things, it is the preliminary opinion of our bond council that they can be combined. But where we're talking about the Emergency Operations Center and the Municipal Complex, these, these public facilities that are not recreation stuff, they would need to be segregated. And again, once council gives a direction about what projects they want to go forward, then we would fine-tune that. But that's just the preliminary feel that we have gotten from our council so far. Am I, am I misspeaking?
Jeff Radley with the Fullay Law Firm. Councilmember, what we're dealing with here is what's referred to as the single-subject rule. And, you know, y'all are bound by that when you pass an ordinance. And we're also bound by that when we present questions to the voters. You know, in slang terms, people call it log-rolling, and you hear that all the time. Now, we understand what your desires are, and we'll do our dead-level best to comply with that rule and also comply with your wishes, too.
I appreciate that, and that's going to weigh heavily on my decision, because I won't be able to feel like we have learned anything from the last seven or eight years of public votes if we don't try and make every effort to ensure that we are, in fact, eating our vegetables. And that leads me to the next point, which is stormwater. This is something that is really getting to me, because as someone mentioned earlier, we did tell the public that stormwater was our top priority. And since that failed vote, we have done very little on it. And in fact, we have done nothing but continue to increase the amount of impervious surface in this city. And with the exception of buying one storm drain camera truck, we have done very little to do anything else for this very major problem. And so, along with bridges and the municipal complex and the Emergency Operations Center and all of these projects, stormwater needs to be a priority. And when we're looking at over $100 million in GO bonds for primarily cake and not vegetables, I wonder exactly what the appetite is gonna be in a couple of years when we might even be forced to come back to voters to ask for more money. So that's also going to weigh very heavily on my decision on this, because I don't feel that we are accurately focusing on what we have previously said is a top priority of this city, and it's been crickets on this issue ever since.
I have to endorse what you're saying, councilmember, because again, when, when the proposals were put forward to the voters related to stormwater and the voters turned them down, as we stated in the capital budget retreat two weeks ago, the need did not go away. So, so yes, that is something that council may want to consider. Again, bond council, I'm sure, would say in that case, a stormwater proposal and an urge proposal would have to be a separate ballot proposition, but they could certainly be considered on the same day.
Well, and that's honestly part of my concern, because we considered two stormwater proposals on the same day that we also considered a transportation bond, which looks a lot more like cake to voters, because they can see beautiful streets, they can see safe bike lanes, they can see nice sidewalks. But they don't get to see the result of what we do on stormwater with, except the absence of flooding. And it's really hard to appreciate something that isn't there. But we all appreciate it when it's flooding, and we can't control it, we wonder why we're not doing more. So that's also going to weigh pretty heavily on my decision-making, because I am very concerned that we are not prioritizing properly from this body. I understand the priorities of people out in the community, but it is our responsibility to also make the best financial decisions and not just the most popular ones. And I feel a little bit like that's the push and pull here tonight. Okay, so now I would like to go a little bit into some of these particular projects and some questions about how the Ripken study played into the original, the original Norman Forward proposal versus this supplement. So who's gonna speak to that? We relied pretty heavily on some of these numbers in this presentation, so hopefully someone can speak to this study.
Yeah, I will do my best.
Okay. That's all I can ask for. So, in this, in this study, for those who don't know, Ripken Design also has two sports complexes, so they don't just consult, they also operate them. And in it, they say, right here, although a recreational pool can be profitable and provide the Norman community with year-round recreation options, competitive pools are less feasible. A freestanding 25-meter-by-25-yard pool, an acceptable size for competitive swimming and common in the high school level and below, is not expected to be operationally profitable. While the facility will always operate at a loss, the revenues from a recreational pool or potential operating efficiencies could mitigate these losses to make the entire complex an operationally breakeven venture. If the city of Norman feels a strong need for a competitive pool, a 25-meter-by-25-yard facility is the best option. So, a 25-yard-by-50-meter pool, or, I'm not sure exactly which number is supposed to go first, was in the original proposal. The current funding is a 25-yard-by-25-meter pool, but the Ripken study actually recommended a 25-yard-by-25-meter pool or 25-meter-by-25-yard. So how did we end up with 50 by 50? Because they also talk about a combined recreational and competitive pool, granted, this was a few years ago, costing about $12.2 million. We are way above that.
Right. I am going to tell you, I cannot answer that question. But there are people, I think, here that, I'm gonna look to Judd here, is there anyone?
Congratulations, Kent.
Well, in all honesty, I mean, these people that are serving on ad hoc and involved in this, they know this project like the back of their hand, so he probably is better to speak to.
Well, and I say, I'm coming, I'm coming at this from a layperson who has to utilize the best information available to me.
Sure, sure, sure.
And since this study is being, was relied on heavily back in 2015 and is continuing to be relied on now, I'm asking the questions.
Okay, so ask the question.
So, how did we end up with an ask for a 50 by 50 when the original proposal was 25 by 50 and the Ripken study said that a 25 by 25 is best?
Okay, so it's not a 50 by 50.
Okay.
It's a 25-yard-by-50-meter pool, and then there's a cooldown pool. I was not part of the Ripken study, never seen the Ripken study. But when the Pisces Project was brought onboard with Norman Forward, our original proposal was a 50-meter pool with a 25, 50 by 25, which is being proposed now. The one difference now is that there's also a cooldown pool in this proposal. The reason that that's the case is because the original idea was that this pool was going to be connected to the Y, and the Y's pool was gonna be used as a cooldown pool. So, I don't know about the Ripken study, but I can tell you that from the very beginning of the Pisces Project and its efforts with Norman Forward, this has been the facility that we have requested.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. I am pretty sure that my next questions are gonna be back to them. Yes, please.
Dan Shim with Visit Norman. So, we have been working with Huddle Up Group as the discussion to have these venues has been ongoing. Huddle Up Group works with communities all over the country. We reached out to them and asked what tournament-quality facilities mean around other places. And so, they have surveyed rights holders for swimming events, for football events, for all of these different sports. And I have a slide that we've shared. Lee, who sits on our board, has seen it, of what tournament-quality facilities mean to these rights holders that host tournaments. And for swimming, it was a 50-meter pool, I think my meters and yards are right, 50-meter pool with 10 lanes. So, what Kent has been asking for with Pisces is what these national rights holders said in their survey was what they needed for tournaments.
All right, thank you. I have a feeling this one's back to you. So, another point made in the Ripken study is that it is highly recommended that the city of Norman secure commitments from competitive teams prior to moving forward with construction. What commitments have we secured?
This is not a question.
Oh, maybe for Judd.
Oliver Brockus, Board Two, City Norman. Sooner Swim Club from Square One has committed $50,000 a year by way of pool rental for the aquatic center. To do $50,000 a year, we have to be able to double our team's size. We don't believe there's a problem with that. We have always been constrained by the dimensions of our 25-yard pool. So to double, we would need a 50-meter pool.
Okay, thank you.
Add a little bit to that, the commitments in terms of the subsidies. One, of course, Sooner Swim Club, she just spoke about. The Norman Public Schools had committed to $50,000 a year. Norman Regional Hospital had said they would do $50,000 a year. And we have $175,000 a year programmed in the Norman Forward tax, all dedicated to help offset the operating costs of the pool.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, oh wait, this one's probably gonna be for you as well. This is related to all the facilities. What operational agreements have been secured for the operation of the facilities?
Well, we have ongoing contracts with Soccer Association, Ball Clubs of Norman. Currently, we would negotiate, take proposals and negotiate for the operation of the Senior Center, the aquatic facility, and the multi-sport facility.
Okay, are we gonna have those before we go to voters?
And we also have adult softball.
Are we gonna have those before we send this to a vote? Because we all know about getting things in writing.
Are we gonna have an operator selected before we go to a vote? I don't think so. We, we have requested proposal, received proposals for the Sen-, the Senior Center? No, yes, the Senior Center, I get them all mixed up. And have drafted a request for proposals for the aquatic and multi-sport facility. So those are in process, but I don't think we'll have an operator selected by, when this vote happens. It's, it may be that quickly, but, because the, the design teams want them onboard to help with the design process, so it is important to get them on sooner than later.
And I, I agree that they should, because, you know, one of, one of the reasons why we don't have sites or didn't have sites for a couple of these projects for a long time, because, because we had only a verbal agreement for a land swap. And if we're going to be trying to reassure voters that we're gonna do it right this time, even though we didn't the last time, then I feel like we have to learn from some of these mistakes and have all of these things in writing that we can talk about publicly so that the public knows that we are going to do it right this time. Because I don't know that we're gonna get another bite at the apple. Which leads me to a question to Anthony about sales tax. I have six and a half pages of comments and questions here. I feel like my brain has just dumped onto this page. What happens if sales tax collections drop in the next year, two years?
We in council will have difficult decisions to make. And again, this would not just impact Norman Forward. The larger concern would be the general fund and all the personnel that are paid for out of the general fund and the public safety sales tax, but it would also affect the capital fund and the Norman Forward sales tax.
And my concern is because if we don't necessarily have operating agreements secured for all of these facilities before they're voted on and before we build them, if sales tax drops and even revenue into these facilities drops, it's going to be the city who's holding the bag to ensure that the lights stay on so that people can still go in and swim and still play basketball. And so, we have to be thinking about all of these things if sales tax drops at all. Do we have any cushion in what we're, what we might be asking for in a GO bond to be able to maybe free up some of the money in Norman Forward for continued operations?
Well, remember that, as Councilmember Patron says, general obligation bonds cannot be used for, for operations. They can only be used for capital facilities. But, to the extent that there was premeditation in Norman Forward related to operations, we did include the subsidy that Judd was talking about for the operation of the pool. And what if sales tax dropped and we could only contribute, for example, $150,000 a year instead of $175,000? Then I would think that the operation of the facility would have to be adjusted. Very similar to the adjustments that council is having to make and the staff is having to make related to this dreaded drop in sales tax.
And that's why I wanna ask these questions, because we need to have the answers before we send this to a vote. So Erin Gavigan brought up a really great point about the 1% for art. What do we have to do to build that into a GO bond to ensure that those art projects are scaled along with the size of the projects?
I would think it would just be some additional language in, in what is being proposed. It would just a similar statement to, and related art facilities or something like that, so.
Well, if we do move forward with that...
I'm praying bond council, so.
If we do move forward with that, I would like to make sure that we include, we include that. Which also leads me to the next question about homelessness. And this was my big kind of knee-jerk reaction when this first came up, which was that we were going to be getting a lot of "why not us this time", which I believe are very valid questions. And that even includes things like stormwater. I'm sure there are city staff sitting here going, "why not me this time?" And so, I would like us to consider including funds for things like homelessness, and that's why I'm not inclined to rush. I don't think the best decisions come from rushing. They don't come from dragging your feet either, but they certainly don't come from rushing. And so, I would like to see a thorough proposal on that before we bring this to a first reading, whoever that is aimed to, that might not be at you, Anthony.
That question about that with a thorough proposal, I would assume we would need to do a full community needs assessment so we understand what the problem is we're actually addressing, because some would argue we don't actually need a day shelter, we need different facilities. And then, if we do what we learned from Norman Forward One and do full design and schematics, how long does that usually take? I feel like it takes about a year. Six months, so on top of what the community needs assessment? No, I'm saying, okay, so more than six months? For the community needs assessment and the drafting of it and all the budgeting and whatnot? Okay, so that would be an estimate of how long it would take.
And the ad hoc committee has been doing a lot of work to get the ball rolling on that, so I think they're well ahead of the curve, and I think that it's a worthwhile discussion to have. And my next question to you, Anthony, is what's our Plan B? What if voters say no? Because I really think that there's a very good chance that they will. I don't know why they would trust us at this point.
Well, I think first, the reason they would trust us is that we have delivered projects within their budgets. Um, we have delivered a spectacular library facility, two spectacular library facilities, one in your ward. We have, we have delivered a Westwood Aquatic Center that has been more wildly successful than anyone had possibly envisioned. Um, so, so, yes, we have built up quite a bit of, of cachet, if you will, with our public, with the projects that have been completed to date. But our Plan B would be to go back to where we are now. And, and, and we would still build an emergency operations center. It would just be too small for our existing needs, leave alone the needs that we have in the future. We would still build a municipal complex. It would just be that police headquarters would be kind of left out there holding the bag, and this building would be unplanned for and unfunded. We would still build, um, a multi-sport facility and an aquatic center. It's just that it would not meet the bottom line, if you will, um, needs identified by the ad hoc group. So, so, we would kind of go back to where we are now.
And I think it's important that we know what that Plan B is, because while we might have delivered on a couple, but certainly not the majority of Norman Forward projects on time or under budget, because the majority of the Norman Forward projects are included in this proposal. You know, just about three months ago, city employees were feeling that their jobs were threatened. And two months ago, we were doing a lot of hand wringing about our general budget, and now we don't have mosquito control or Fourth of July fireworks. And the public looks at cities' finances and how we manage our money comprehensively. And I think that it's important that they do so. And so, I do worry that especially with what we've been putting out there over the last few months, that the public is going to sit back and say, "What are you asking for? You just told us that city employees might lose their jobs. You just told us that we had a three-and-a-half million dollar budget shortfall this year and one-and-a-half million dollars next year. You've cut mosquito control, you've cut the Fourth of July fireworks, among a number of other things, and now we're gonna build a whole bunch of facilities that we've already told the public we don't have the money to operate next year, because we have a very significant budget shortfall." So, I do worry, I do worry about taking voters for granted that just because they like some of these projects, or maybe even all of these projects, that they're going to be willing to put their hands in their pocket and give the city a hundred-plus million dollars. And this might not even be our only vote this year, because we do have a water rate increase that we're gonna have to do soon. So, I worry about this whole chessboard, because while we might be looking at just individual pieces, the public is looking at the whole thing.
And I would, I would urge you and just understand that it is council's job to look at the whole picture. It is my job to look at the whole picture, and I guarantee you that I do. When I hear, "Why are we talking about cutting the mosquito control program when you had the money to build this sparkling new library?" I have to explain that that's two different pots of money. And that the voters approved Norman Forward to build these new sparkling facilities for the im- improvement of the quality of life in Norman. But the sales tax of the city that is funding our general fund operations is not growing at the rate that we proposed and that we expected it to. And those are the things that we have to continually, you as a fiduciary of the city, me as the city's chief financial officer, we have to continually educate the public about. That, yes, the citizens can, can, can pass a seventy-two million dollar general obligation bond issue to improve and widen the streets of Norman, and that doesn't put any money into, into paying the salary of the park maintenance crews or to providing for the fireworks, okay? Now, going back to the things that we were talking about over the last two or three months related to the petition that nullified the council's action that solved the budget problem for this year, remind council that we have a fiscal year twenty-one budget that is before us now. And while the immediate fiscal year twenty problem has been hopefully averted, we still have things to address. So, I do not want to give the impression that your chief financial officer is saying that, "Hey, voters, we need this hundred million dollars to build Norman Forward and these public facilities right." But that addresses all of our other problems, because it does not. And I appreciate you bringing that to the light, because it has to be continually stated and restated that we have different needs, some of which are being addressed, some of which are not. And our voters have not addressed the stormwater problem.
And that's, my worry is that that doesn't fit very well on an informational mailer to voters. That's my, that's my concern. And the very, very tight timeline that's been proposed here does not give me a whole lot of confidence, just like it didn't give me a whole lot of confidence on stormwater either. I really felt like we needed a longer runway, and I feel a little bit like we do here, which kind of, this might be a question for you, it might be a question for Judd or Jason, is, "How many meetings are we gonna have if the twenty-fourth magically remains the date? How many meetings are we gonna have between now and then to go over each of these proposals individually?"
Just remember that, first off, in Jason's proposal, he talked about time being of the essence. And a lot of these projects are either in final design or under construction. And so, we have to make decisions about what are we finally going to do with these projects, and we need to do it quickly. Because if we have to go back to the drawing board and cut out thirty million dollars from the aquatic center and the multi-sport center, the runway is shortened to get that done. But, if council, um, approves on the fir- the second meeting in March and the first meeting in April to put this ordinance on the ballot to ask the voters if they want to approve this general obligation bond issue or this sales tax, by state law, remember, there's still seventy days before the vote happens. So, yes, just as there wa- you know, that's a scary thought. Just as there was with stormwater, there would be dozens of opportunities for public meetings, for individual councilmember ward meetings, for going out to service clubs, to going out to the, um, uh, optimist clubs and those groups that are represented here, to explain what council has actually put onto the ballot and what all of the impacts would be. And there's a lot of time for that after the ordinance is, is, is placed on the ballot.
But part of that is my concern, is having enough time to get through all of this myself so that I can feel confident in voting for these projects to go to the voters. I feel like a lot of that due diligence needs to be done by us ahead of time. Um, things like the operational agreements. I mean, I, I have questions, I have questions about whether or not any private funding that's secured should be, should offset feder- city funds and not be in addition to. I, I mean, there are, there are so, I mean, what about, what about a sports improvement district for the extra funding for the multi-sport facility in the North Park? If the economic impact's supposed to be so great, why don't we use the revenue from that to pay off any, you know, any bonds that we, that we generate for? You know, I mean, I feel like, I feel like we have an opportunity to look at this comprehensively as a council. But what I'm hearing is that we had one meeting last week, we had one meeting this week, and then maybe we won't have any more meetings before this is supposed to come to a vote?
The next two are scheduled to discuss this topic.
Okay, and that was, that was my question, is how many more meetings are we gonna have to be able to go over this in depth? Because some of this, like, all of this stuff about Griffin is news to me. I mean, the indoor, the indoor soccer field had been off the table for as long as I've been on council. So, to see it back on the table is brand-new. I don't really know why. I don't, I, I mean, I could wade through ad hoc committee agendas, but there are a lot of ad hoc committee agendas, and we have a lot of other things on our plates, too. So, nothing has been sent to me to say, "This is the important information for you to know, to see these new plans for Griffin." I never got any of that. I never even heard that that, that was in the works. And if it weren't for Councilmember Patron back in November, on November twenty-sixth, when we had the Night of the Tiff vote, she told us publicly that there were, that there were some bubbling issues going on with Reeves, with, with the Aquatic Center, and that was the first I had heard of it then. And so, I really worry that, I mean, I can't get through my whole six pages of questions just tonight, nor do I wanna hold everyone hostage for all of this. But I didn't even get this information for tonight's presentation until after four o'clock. I'd already left to come here, so I was waiting, continuing to wade through last week. So, I don't know about the rest of everyone, but I'm not feeling like I have a whole lot of information to go off of right now for a very, very large ask to put to voters. And if I'm gonna feel confident about it and actually go out there and tell people that this is the right thing for us to be doing, I'm gonna need more time to get through this and ask some additional information. I mean, the Ripken study recommends one parent company or committee for all the new sporting facilities to oversee and manage them all. I mean, I, I really feel in a lot of ways like we're putting the cart before the horse with such a drastic budget increase on these projects. I wanna know what that's gonna entail within more detail than I think we have time for right now.
I think it would be helpful if you put all of your questions in an email and sent them to the city manager and the city clerk so they could start working on them before the meetings.
I would, I would have, except I only got the information at four o'clock, so.
I'm talking about going forward. I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
Why do I always have to go after those two?
Push your button faster.
Faster my button. They asked all the good questions, um, but I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit aghast, and I understand where the different, different buckets of money and all that. But, wow, what, those are some tough conversations, especially in my ward. To say, on one hand, we've recently talked to employees about maybe having some real tough conversations and cuts. And then, on the other hand, let's ask for a hundred and thirteen million dollars to add more, bigger, nicer facilities to our repertoire that has to be, uh, maintained and staffed. And I know we have, uh, private groups, they'll do part of that, so. Um, and very specifically, I'm having a really tough time with the fact that this city and, and one of my big conversations I've had with my ward, where I've actually ran up the hill and threw myself on the sword, was stormwater. Like, I, I probably am never getting elected in this town again in my ward, because I said, "We need a stormwater utility and we need a stormwater bond." And I said it emphatically, and I voted for it, and it got voted down. We've done not much more. I think that, uh, I wanna say we've not done anything, because I know Dr. Carrie Evenson does a lot with what she has. But we, as a council body, haven't done much else to push this issue and push the issue. Um, so, as, me as the fiduciary, to use your words, I don't feel comfortable asking for a hundred and thirteen million dollars and gobble-upping, gobbling up our bond capacity. I don't know what it does to our overall bond capacity, but at some point, we're gonna s- over saturate the voters' appetite for these things. And we've already seen them, vegetables and cake situation. They already love the cake and don't wanna do the infrastructure stuff. And, and I'm sorry, but we're headed down a really scary path in this city if we don't take care of some of these problems. And that is a big concern for me, so that, that's my big weight. And then, I've served on the Ad Hoc for Homelessness Committee over the past few months. Not well, because Tuesdays are really hard for me, but I know that some of my fellow colleagues have been very diligent. They've gone to Oklahoma City. They, our city staff is working on, uh, all kinds of efforts on, and, and, and thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars that they got to do a warming shelter for a few months. And we, I came up one night and offered coffee to the folks, and it was such a cool thing to see. One little blip of a conversation I had in this room when we were talking about the city facilities, and I said, maybe y'all remember, "Can we do a stop station or a resource center of some sort?" Because I had watched the man live in the alcove, live in an alcove, as you guys are talking about not getting a big enough pool, living in an alcove in our city-owned building that we boarded up to keep him out, because there's a lot of problems with that. I get it. And I watched that happen, and I thought, "Man, it seems like we could carve out some spaces in our city for the, for people that are in a situation, whether they're not comfortable being in a home or they don't have the resources being in a home." So, for me, homelessness is way up here, because, I don't know, if you've been to San Francisco or if you've been to LA and you've seen the sixty thousand homeless people milling around in those cities, but it's not necessarily fun as a tourist, you know, either. So, I think that if we don't take care of the, the least among us, as you said, then what are we really doing here? And, and homelessness is at the top of my list. Bigger pool, little bit below that, sorry. Um, I had kids in sports, I traveled for sports for my kids. I always wondered why the city of Norman didn't have these big tournaments. I do believe that the tournaments can be an economic driver, because I've spent tons of money at Chili's in all kinds of cities. So, if we can find a balance in this, I could support it. But for me, stormwater, bridges, homelessness, and then the other stuff.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here and sitting through, uh, this meeting with us. A lot of very important issues, some very great comments and questions have been asked. Let's see, I have one question for Anthony, just what exactly was our bonding capacity currently in the city of Norman? Uh, what could we ask for right now?
There are various areas of the state constitution that enables municipalities to go into indebtedness. Um, the city attorney sent out a memo about that. Um, but for the general indebtedness, um, the, the, the voting capacity of the city, which requires a sixty percent plurality, there is no legal limit for public utilities, for which there is only requirement for a simple majority and which all of these projects would fall under the public utility umbrella, if you will. There is only the need for a simple majority, and there is no limit to what the voters approve. There's a third, um, um, section of the constitution that cities can issue debt on that is limited. It's limited to five mills, and that's what, um, the proposal for stormwater was proposed under, because, as you'll recall, uh, many of those facilities were not to be on city-owned land. And so, for public utilities, it has to be on city-owned land, and that's where you fall under a different section of the constitution. But for the things that we're proposing here, there is no legal limit.
Thank you. There's a lot of things in the city that need money. Norman Forward projects, we've identified municipal complex issues. We have an ADA plan that needs to be funded. We have stormwater, we have bridges. I mean, there's a lot of things. I think we could suffer from some paralysis if we sit and back and think about all the things that we have to do and think, "Well, we can't do anything because we can't decide which one we're gonna do or which one's the most important." They're all important. Some of the things I would talk about, about the municipal complex, for example, is the information technology, the IT department. The upgrades to the IT, IT department are part of the municipal complex upgrades. The IT department in Norman is, I think, three people, uh, primarily. And they protect all the sensitive information of all the residents of Norman that pay utility bill, all this banking information, the city's budget, all these types of things. Their job is to protect us from, uh, from attacks that are happening from all over the world every day, all day. It's an extremely important piece of the city government that we don't talk about a lot, the public doesn't think about a lot. But we need money for that. And that's part of the municipal complex stuff that I think is really important. I've personally always felt that the municipal court was a very important project, that getting it out of the police department and into its own freestanding building was extremely important for a city of a hundred and twenty-five thousand people to have one single courtroom. That's all the municipal court is, it's one courtroom. And there's files in the hallways, and there's, there's an addition onto the building that, you know, is be part of the parking lot. And, um, it's not a pleasant place. And not everybody that's at the municipal court is there because they're a bad person, and they deserve to be treated terribly on what's already a really bad day for them. So, uh, the municipal court being moved out of the police department and into its own building is an extremely important project, in my opinion, uh, that many people may not think about as being as important as other issues. The police department, um, if you've never been inside of it before, it's not like what you see on TV usually where it's, there's people everywhere and files or, you know, papers are being shuffled and the phones ringing off. there's people everywhere and files or, you know, papers are being shuffled and the phones ringing off the hook. It's not really like that at all. And the building is, in my opinion, in terrible shape. I mean, it would be very difficult. We've heard this from our officers and people in administration of the department. It's hard to recruit quality officers to a department when they look at the brand-new police department that Moore has, the brand-new police department that OKC has. They've, they've built brand-new police precincts. Edmund just built a brand-new police department in downtown Edmund. Yukon has a new police department. All these other cities have new facilities that are state-of-the-art, that have protected entryways, that have protected parking lots for police officers. Our police department does not have that. There's no gated entry for police officers to, when they're changing from their personal vehicles into their patrol cars. There's nothing protecting them when they exit the back of the police department to go get on their patrol cars. There have been incidents of people being back there before, just stuff like that. And the building itself, like I said, is, is old. It's falling apart. It was built at a time when there was, I think, one female officer. The facilities for female officers in that building are not a standard that would be ideal for today at all. I don't know that it would be ideal back then either, but we have a lot more officers now than we did back then. The building just isn't, isn't adequate and needs to be updated. I think, we talked about the homeless shelter. I don't know if a warming shelter is the specific thing that's needed or a day shelter or both. I don't know where it would be located or how it would be operated, how it would be funded. It's something I'm very interested in, though. I don't believe it will solve our homeless problem, like has been mentioned. A lot of people in Oklahoma will talk about California and other places that have problems. But I would just point out that California has 40 million people. Oklahoma has four. More people live in the city of Los Angeles than live in the entire state of Oklahoma. Okay? And they have 14 city council members in Los Angeles. And they oversee a government and a city that has more people than this entire state. They oversee a budget that is bigger than the state budget of Oklahoma. Okay? So, there's 18 million people that live in the Los Angeles area. So 69,000 homeless people does sound like a lot and it really is a lot. But there are also 18 million people that live in that area. And they can't build housing fast enough in California to keep up with the number of people that continue to move there. It's a real issue that they're having and building new facilities isn't getting, isn't solving the problem. So we have to look beyond just, we can build a building that can house people and there's a lot of value in that, especially in the winter months when it's extremely cold and it can result in people's lives if, if they're left out in those elements. But there's a lot to think about and I don't know that we could figure that out by June. I'm thinking that at earliest, an August vote would probably be more attainable. But one of the comments that did particularly stick out to me from someone, Award Seven resident, actually was that it's never cheaper to do it right than right now. And we have seen that the cost of these projects has increased significantly since 2015. And it's not necessarily that we've been waiting, just waiting and waiting. We've done other projects, as has been mentioned. We've completed some very nice projects so far and under budget on a couple of them. But, as has also been mentioned, sales tax has not been keeping up with projections. They haven't been keeping up with historic projections. One of the questions I asked Anthony last week was, in 2015, when we made these projections, was it appropriate? You know, was that in line with what we had historically seen up to that point? And the answer was yes. That was, the projections we made were appropriate at the time with the information that we had at the time. But we've seen a drastic change in the last five years in consumer habits that really is different than any of us have seen as far as what people are buying in brick-and-mortar stores anymore. And it was also mentioned too, that we did, we did think that, you know, we're gonna have to shuffle some things around. We're gonna be looking for some savings on this project. We're gonna be looking for federal funding on this project. And we're gonna try to get this all done because we knew how much we could get out of a 15-year sales tax at the rate that we were asking for. And we also knew that we had already cut a couple of projects out. We were pretty much at a stalemate on cutting anything else out. All the groups came and said, "Don't, please don't cut our project out." Like, you know, so we said, "Okay, we'll find a way to do this. We think we can do it. It's gonna be hard. We're gonna have to tighten the belts." And maybe we'll have to ask for an extension at some point or something along those lines. To me, an 11-year extension of Norman Forward is not ideal at all. I don't, I agree with many of the comments about sales tax and relying on it. I don't think we should continue to rely on it, especially for these projects. I think a, a general obligation bond would be the best way forward. It is something I would definitely like to support. It does give me a little bit of nervousness about having to separate the issues. I think Norman voters can understand the importance of the municipal projects when we talk about things like information technology. We talk about the municipal court, talk about safety at the police department, things like that. And also how the improvements to the municipal court can help us provide a better customer service experience to the residents of Norman. If you're trying to build something in Norman, if you're trying to open a business in Norman, if you're trying to do anything in, in Norman, our reputation has always been, "It's so hard to do business in Norman. We don't want to do business in Norman." Well, one of the things that we can do to change that is make the city municipal complex easier to navigate. So one of the things that I've always commented about this place is that it doesn't even say City Hall anywhere here. It doesn't say City Hall outside on any building. This building is called 201. That's the address, just 201. And then you've got building A, B, C, and D. And so, people come in here and say, "Where's the municipal complex?" "I don't know. It's, well, you gotta go through here and walk across the parking lot." It's, it's in the police department and you might have to sit out in the, in the hallway somewhere, but, or you might even stand outside. So it's just not a very welcoming environment here at City Hall. It's not even recognized as being called City Hall. And something like that, I think, is very important. The Emergency Operations Center is extremely important. I think the part about it being with able, being able to withstand a F-4 tornado is extremely important. That was one of the big selling points of it, is that our emergency operations services, keeping the city government functioning, our police and fire services functioning in the event of a disaster. Currently, our 911 operations center is in the basement of the police department, which is right next to the train tracks. If there were any kind of incident involving a train where liquid was spilled out, we might be without our emergency operations center right now where it's currently located. There's just, it, it's not a good setup. It's not all-in-one location. And our city buildings currently are not able to withstand a severe storm of that kind. So to me, it's extremely important that that, a place like that has to be done exactly right the first time. We can't just, you know, half-ass it. It's gotta be done right and it's gotta be able to withstand the type of storms and events that we're thinking it might be necessary. Hopefully, it never is needed for that type of thing, but hopefully, but having it there and ready to go. And these other facilities that we've promised voters that we would do, I think it's important that we do them right. And as was mentioned by a resident in the audience, having to come back a few years later and revisit the project is only gonna cost more to build it and then come back a few years later and try to re-add on and i- is a real problem. And issues like the Animal Welfare Center that has been brought up tonight, how, it was an issue that a lot of people felt really passionate about. Everybody knew we really needed it. It was important. But there was issues with planning for it before it went to a vote. It went to a vote, it passed, and it got built. But then we've run into a whole bunch of problems since we built it because there were things that weren't thought about in what I thought was the haste to get it done quickly. That was a thing that was used with a rule of three to get done too. So, the funding operations of the homeless facility is a question I have, but it is a project that I am very interested in seeing us explore further, whether it's part of this bond or something in the near future. I think it's something we need to do. I think we need to identify what we're gonna do for our warming shelter next winter regardless. I don't think we're gonna be able to build something by then anyway. Where else in Norman could we do that by next winter would be nice. And as I mentioned too, none of this fixes the city's general fund problems. This, we're talking about a solution to one of, or two, if you want to look at it, but one of many problems that we have. And we can't solve them all at once, I don't think. So we kinda have to decide which ones can we dissolve right now. Can we afford to do nothing on everything else while we wait for the right time to do stormwater again? Because I don't know when that will be. We don't have a budget to do anything more than, I mean, after our voters said no, the city council were kind of, what more can we do? We have the money we have and it's, we've been able, we, we were able to get the video truck and I think that will help in the future to show it, physical examples, this is what it looks like in the pipes. When we go back to voters someday and ask them for a stormwater utility, we'll have actual examples to show people about what's going on and what we're trying to fix. So that's one step, but it's a small step. But I don't know what more we could do without more funding currently. And that problem is only gonna grow. So we do have to find ways to reduce the general fund's obligation on sales tax and the city's overall reliance on sales tax. I'm very interested in the bridges being part of either the five-year road bond when that comes up next year, 2021, or potentially part of this, if we can, if we identify those top, those top six, put those in there perhaps. I'd be interested in exploring that. And, again, I would just lastly say, I don't think we can look at it as this is solving all of our problems or that if we do this, we don't care about other issues. I think we kinda have to look at it as what can we get done right now? What has the support to get done right now? And I think these types of projects are things that Norman voters will support. Some, they've already supported before. Some are new and we're asking them to support more funding for. But I would like to go forward to this. I do think that June might be too soon. But I do understand the time crunch as well and the longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna cost. So, that, that makes it very tough for us. We've gotta make some very big decisions in a very short amount of time. And there are potential downsides and consequences to that. So, hopefully, we can keep having some meetings about this and fine tune a few of these things. I would also like to get some feedback from city manager Pyle about these proposals as well when he gets back. So, I'm hopeful about this. I think, again, this helps us solve a couple of our real big problems, but understanding that we still have other big problems that it won't solve and that we're gonna have to keep working on and make tough decisions about. So, thank you all for being a part of this. We're gonna need all of your help to get through it and make sure we do the best thing for our community. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Scanlon.
I appreciate the good work that you all did in, in focusing us on some of these problems. But as you've heard from other people here on the dais, there's a lot of stuff that we still would like to know. We think we need to know before we push forward. There's a story to be told. We don't quite know that all the chapters are there yet. So, we're gonna work on it. I'm gonna work on it. Norman Forward, promises made, promises we need to keep. I think it's very important. And I also think that you don't go with half a loaf. If a 50-meter pool is what's necessary to provide the, the kind of competition venue that we need, that will in turn provide some tax revenue back to the city, then good, let's do that. Let's not aim in the middle. Let's do what we need to do. The senior center was always a stepchild of Norman Forward. Yea, verily, we want to do it, but we're not sure where and we're not sure what. We thought we had a where because we own the land, but we weren't sure what. The hospital has come along and said, "Well, look at this. We can replicate some Maps4 stuff from the city. There may be some benefits to both of us by meeting the hospital and the city by locating on the Porter campus. That's worth exploring." And maybe that's the answer. I'd like to know more details. I know what the senior coalition has said and I appreciate that, but I'd, I'd like to know more details. I'd like to know more details about the whole Porter repurposing. That's just one part of it. And as an aside, the repurposing is not really our focus here tonight. I was on the Public Safety Committee before assuming this lofty perch and had the occasion to follow the EOC project for four years. Again, it's a matter of, we, we can't just get by with this thing. I believe it's absolutely vital that we have a, a storm-proof facility, one with, with adequate room for things like dispatch. And, and my colleague from Ward Seven mentioned the police department and the fact that we have dispatch in the basement. They live in a cave. It's, it's just absolutely miserable working condit- conditions. As a result, we're down four people, I believe that's the last number, four dispatchers. So we're working overtime in an absolutely crummy environment. We have to do better for those people. Absolutely have to. And the fact that we're located in a danger zone adjacent to the railroad tracks is, is also not a good deal. If you go to file a complaint with the police, chances are you're gonna be interviewed in the lobby because there's no place else there for you to share your woes with the officer taking the report. That can't be. But it is and will be until we do something to renovate that facility. If we're thinking about the people of this, this city, one of the things that I hope they prize is privacy. And they don't get it in the darkest of times. I do volunteer work both at the police station and the municipal court. And I can attest, as, as Stephen mentioned, to the inadequacies of both facilities. Truly is. Homelessness, as has been alluded, I've been a part of the Ad Hoc Committee. I've spent time in Oklahoma City looking at that facility. I've talked to the homeless, as April Hyple was telling us earlier that we should do. I've seen some success stories at our warming shelter. And I realize we can't solve the homeless problem, but we can solve homeless problems individually. And I've seen some success stories there that really warm my cockles. I don't pretend that the city should invest in a super-large facility. I'm not even sure that the city should invest in, in the running of it. I think the city should put forward some ideas. I think the city should throw some seed money. Ultimately, it's gonna require the, the continuum of care that already exists to continue along this road. It's gonna, I believe, require donations either in money or in, in kind from, as in Oklahoma City, businesses and so on. Businesses step up. The city of Oklahoma City provides $300,000 to a multimillion-dollar operation. The rest of it is, it's a charity and it's done by donations, both by individuals and corporations. And I think that's the model that we have to pursue. But we, the city, can get things started. And that's not to denigrate what April does at Food and Shelter. I volunteer there as well. I'm intimately familiar with what they do. It, it is a noble effort. All of this needs to be coordinated, as I think you indicated in your remarks. Stormwater. I also had the privilege of participating in that committee. And, and I know that there were priority lists of things that the, the Stormwater Citizen Committee came up with, both in terms of capital projects and in terms of other things, the TV truck being one among them. If there's room in whatever the book that we're writing to have a chapter on stormwater, then I would suggest that the staff either go back and look at the prioritized list that the committee came up with or reconvene the committee and take a look at, not everything certainly, we couldn't begin to do that, but maybe some of it. Pick off some of the, the projects that make sense to do. Not the super-big ones maybe, but something. We need to make progress. Even if it's baby steps, we need to make progress and this is an opportunity. I think that if we can tell this story correctly, then, then we will meet with success. I, I think that the, the geo-bond is certainly the way to go. We may not curse the city with additional sales taxes that never seemed to provide the benefit, the, the, the funding that we had hoped for. And, and to continue to count on that, I, I, for some of these projects is folly. on that, I, I, for some of these projects is folly. Well, I was going to make some comment too about process because I think a gentleman earlier on said that we need to do better at this. I think we do too. I'm not sure what the answer is. I do think though, that rushing to judgment and in June, maybe too soon. I don't know that we can have our book galleys finished by then. Maybe August. We need not delay too long, but we got to get it right. Thank you all for listening. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Hall.
First of all, I'd just like to thank everybody who stuck it out so far and for everybody else who took the time to attend and participate in the process. And I really appreciate the work of all of you and all of the preparation that's been done over the last two weeks. So thank you for that. I also really appreciate so many of the heartfelt comments that we heard in our public commenting session, section about just how everyone feels about sometimes their particular project or their particular area that they have volunteered their time and energy and spent, in some cases, 10 and 20 years investing in projects that benefit children in Norman that, you know, are now adults, when a lot of you started all of this. So I think we really appreciate all of that. Most of the questions that I had have already been addressed. Most of the comments that I would make have probably already been made. I do have one technical question about the bonding proposals when we put them to the ballot. So I'm not sure who would answer this, so I'm just going to throw it out there. We've talked about our bonding capacity and we've talked about the reasoning behind why it's necessary to split them into two proposals at, as presently imagined. My question is, is there any limit to the number of proposals that can be put on a ballot at the same time?
From a legal standpoint, no. Oklahoma City, I know for last year had a proposition, 13 proposals on, on one proposition day.
Okay. And how did those fare? Do you have any idea?
They, they all passed in addition to a sales tax increase and an extension of, of additional sales tax.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So I think the rest of my comments are just going to be more of a general nature. I supported the Norman Forward proposal when it was put towards the voters and I continue to support the Norman Forward projects. You know, this is a, a big project that went to the vote of the people and had overwhelming support and I feel like we are at a crossroads now to decide what path we're going to take. And I've had a lot of constituent comments and they are all over the map on how they feel about this, which is to be expected when you're talking about things of this nature. But I do feel like we have set an expectation for our community, not only what we proposed in the first place and how it was understood by the community, but how we have executed and built the Norman Forward projects that have been completed already. And I think most people would agree, not everyone does, but most people would agree that we have set a high bar for what we are expecting out of our Norman Forward projects. And after spending hours with several constituent groups for the last couple of months about what they feel that, you know, it may be a want to some of you, but I know it feels like a need for the people who are involved in the project. So there's, you know, that tension there too of how, how we accomplish all this. So generally speaking, I do support the Norman Forward projects and I do think that we need to give our community an opportunity to vote. And I just feel like we've heard the, the phrase, do it right over and over and over again. And I believe doing it right is, you know, going big and asking to complete the projects in the manner that the ad hoc committees have arrived at over months and months of work. So, you know, how, how, how that fares, I don't know. What kind of community support there is for that? I'm not really sure, but I do feel like we need to give the community an opportunity to vote on completing these projects and doing it right. So on the municipal projects, I do have a lot of concern about if it really is going to be necessary to split these into two proposals because I can envision a scenario where we keep comparing cake and vegetables. I can envision a scenario where one might pass and the other doesn't. And that really concerns me because it's sort of occurred to me as I've been listening to everybody's comments, when we talk about Norman Forward, we always talk about quality of life projects. Well, all of these municipal projects, I think I could argue that those are quality of life projects as well. There are benefits to our employees that deserve to have excellent facilities to work in and not be compromised along the way because we just couldn't do it right. And I think all of those projects that we're talking about, it's, it's really hard to see what we would be shortchanging, not only our staff who has to work in these facilities, but our community for the benefit of what they're going to get by having public safety issues addressed and having our public transit system off to a good start. It's been a rocky, it's been a rocky year. It's been a really hard transition, but I think, you know, we have an opportunity to get that right too. And so I see the municipal project, part of this as a quality of life project as well. How we effectively get that across to our voters will be, you know, part of the challenge. But I, I am disappointed that we may have to split those proposals into two different proposals because I think that creates some challenges. As far as the other things that we're talking about, I fully support continuing to explore what we need with a day shelter and how we continue to care for our homeless population in Norman. I think we learned a lot of things over the last couple of months by having a warming shelter in place and I definitely support continuing to explore that. Also disappointing if that can't be part of this particular conversation, but I definitely think that we need to keep that high on our list. And the good news is it's actually on our list. So I'm piling on, on stormwater as well. That's not even on the list and I would like to see if it's possible to get it on the list. And Dr. Evenson has sat here through this entire meeting and I'm going to give you an opportunity, if you would like it, to tell us what some of our most pressing capital stormwater projects are. And if you don't, if you're not prepared to do that tonight, that's okay too. Okay. Yeah. Might as well make it worth your while since you stuck around.
Okay. So Carrie Evenson, Stormwater Program Manager. And I'll just talk about a couple that are the high priority projects. As you know, from our discussion on the Stormwater Master Plan, there are 60 projects, over 60 projects identified. They were identified back when the Stormwater Master Plan was developed, so 2009. We're now approaching, what, 11 years that these projects have been identified and we've only been able to get about three or four of them done in that time. So we have a lot of work still to do to catch up on our infrastructure. Some of the big projects involve stream bank stabilization where people are losing backyards, where we're putting infrastructure in jeopardy because the stream banks are eroding and can affect our bridges or affect our water and wastewater lines, things like that. And then it's just, you know, dealing with the localized flooding across the city. Those are some of the projects that have been waiting for a funding source that the bond would have addressed. The maintenance needs would be the utility. Can't pay for those with bond funds, but that's where we're at with stormwater infrastructure in the city.
Thank you. You're welcome. So I, I think it's really important that we keep stormwater on the front burner. We have kind of let that take the backseat for a while because we've been discussing a lot of critical, other critical issues to our city, but I think stormwater is definitely something that we need to keep on the front burner and if it's possible to include maybe the most important projects, I would like to see us consider that. I also understand the timing issue. As the newest member of the council, it's a lot of information to absorb and I would definitely like to think about the pros and cons of moving forward so quickly to the dates the proposed versus waiting a few more months and, and moving it to August. So maybe we can flesh some of this out. Other than that, I, I think we do have an opportunity here to address a lot of needs that we have been discussing over and over and a lot of people have been working on for years and years and years. So I do think we have an opportunity to go to the voters and it's, it's already a big ask. And I, you know, I'm wondering if we can't make it just a little bit bigger to keep addressing some of these other things that we also see as really important to the quality of life in our community.
Thank you, council member. And I'll try and keep mine concise. We've been here a long time. I get wanting to avoid the Norman Forward mistake of not asking for everything that we want, but the common theme between the proposed projects, be it separate bonds or not, which I believe, again legally, let's just all accept the fact that they have to be separate, but the common bond is that those are things that voters have already supported. And my fear is that by tacking on things, despite the long list of needs we have in our community, each thing we tack on reduces the ability for something like that to pass. And I, I think Councilmember Carter pointed out that nicely, that it, they were all previously approved in some way and different circumstances have made them need some additional support. There's a lot of great things said by everybody tonight. Councilmember Holman pointed out the analysis paralysis. We think and talk things to death, which isn't always a bad thing, but we have a, a list of needs and I also liked what he said about what can we get done now? I get that June might be too soon. I'm fine with looking at August, but that would be August 24th. I know someone will accuse us of picking a date that's not on everyone's radar and trying to sneak people in to vote for it because June is the primary and August is not. And is there anything else that we know of that would be on the ballot in August? Runoffs? So pri, for the, the primaries for state and then the runoffs for August? So that's something I'm thinking of. Councilmember Bierman mentioned the upcoming water utility rate, which my understanding would be in early 2021 at this time. The further we push this back, the closer we get to that one. So I think that's something to be mindful of as well. I'm all for adding some sort of homeless facility, but I'm concerned that we would be rushing that and then repeating the exact same mistake that we did with Norman Forward projects, with not having it completely fleshed out of what it looks like, what we need, how much it costs, where it's going to go. On top of the capital costs, there's the operating cost, which we saw with the animal shelter. So I, I'm hoping we can learn from our mistakes with that one. I don't know if we can get that involved, but as council member Hall said, it's on the radar now and I love the conversations that we're having and I appreciate all the time that everyone's put into that issue and I'm glad that we're serious about tackling it. In terms of stormwater, it's failed twice. I, I don't want to call it the kiss of death because obviously we need to address it. I don't know if sticking it in here would be the right thing. And then I was asking our city attorney, what is the needed approval rate of stormwater projects? And unless it's on city land, and please, Ms. Walker, correct me if I'm wrong, that needs a 60% approval. So I, I think that gets a little more complicated there. We often say, let the people vote. I, I was listening tonight. I, I think people want to vote on this. We have put together a lot of projects with a lot of detail, with clear needs and we know exactly what we need to do to fulfill what the voters wanted the first time around and we have an opportunity to do it and do it rather quickly. And if we don't do it quickly and we, we beat this, this horse to death, then what happens? Well, we've heard what happens. They've told us. There are clear spelled out delays that it's a domino effect. We obviously can't do nothing, you know, inaction is not an option. So we have options on the table. What I'm hearing from the majority of council is people are ready to move forward. Some would like to explore an August date. Some would like to explore adding other needed projects. You could make an argument, bridges folds into transportation and we didn't know that they needed to be in the transportation bond when it went past because of new information that we got. So maybe we could fold that and at least enough to get us through the new bond package that we would vote on also in 2021. I just really worry about log rolling this one and putting in everything that we want. I, again, council member Holman's comments of what can we get done now? The, the list is long. It will always be long, but we can sit here and, and do nothing or we can finish the job on several projects and move our community forward, which is what we were elected to do. So I want to be very clear about that. I'm, I'm all for getting public input like we do often and I love that we do that, but we, we are the ones in the seats meant to make the tough decisions and this is the beautiful happy medium is we make the decisions and then they get to decide. That's what we need to be doing. But again, I appreciate everyone's thoughtful comments. I, I look forward to Councilmember Bierman's list of questions. They're always very thorough and, see? What did I tell you? And, and that'll help move the conversation even faster. And so I would encourage all council members, if you have questions, they can answer it a whole lot faster if they have a heads up of what you're wanting to know and then we can address these. And as we, we mentioned earlier, the next two study sessions will continue this discussion. And as I mentioned, I'm, I'm fine looking at an August date, but we can't, we can't wait. We have a chance to do something that really moves our community forward and, and I hope that we have the, the vision and as we were told tonight, the ability to be bold and do what our community needs. Thank you very much. This session is adjourned.